Some housekeeping before we get going. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, Channel 9, government access on Monday, April 26 at 6:00 PM. Though to any and all matters pending in this committee. Tonight, we have quite a few items to talk about, two big subjects. I know I sent an email out to a lot of folks in the city and my colleagues on what I'd like to do tonight, but I'll talk about that briefly. Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker. Also pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged as impermissible. So I popped an email out. This is going to be one of a few subcommittee meetings in finance about Quincy College. First item we have on the agenda. I'd like to try to get a hard stop about 7:30 in regards to the presentation that the President of the College, President De Cristofaro, will put out, open questions up to my colleagues, come back for possibly another date in a couple of weeks, and then if needed, a meeting before the May 17 meeting. I think three meetings should cover this. And I now turn it over to Mr. Chris Walker, who will do a few introductions and then will turn it over to President De Cristofaro for his presentation on Quincy College.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity for the mayor and his team to formally present you what he believes will be a transformational proposal when it comes to education in the city, providing opportunity, and becoming a driver of the economy in downtown Quincy. As you all know before you, is a land acquisition proposal to obtain what is known as the Monroe Building on Hancock Street, right across the Hancock Adams Common from City Hall. The purpose of that acquisition would be to build a permanent home for Quincy College as well as relocate city offices that are currently in the glass building, what we know as New City Hall here. Tonight, we'll have three presenters touching on various aspects of what's before you. We'll start with, as Chairman McCarthy mentioned, President De Cristofaro will lead off, talk about the current state of the college and why a measure of permanence that's at the heart of this proposal is so important to the future of the college. Public Buildings Commissioner Hines will follow that up and talk about the city offices portion of the proposal with a focus on the current conditions of this glass building and what it would take monetarily to bring it into good order. And Joe Shea from Granite City Partners will then discuss the process that has arrived, has led us to arrive to this point, including the specifics of what's before you tonight and the process we used to get there. Obviously, and that relates to the land acquisition and the relative components of that. As the chairman mentioned, we view this meeting something as a, to some degree, as an introduction to the proposal and fully understand that the council will have additional questions and require additional information as the process moves forward. Tonight is the beginning of that information sharing process. And I understand that the committee does have other business on the table tonight, but just wanted to make sure you know from the mayor's perspective, look forward to providing any and all additional information as the process moves forward in the coming weeks. With that, I'd like to introduce no stranger to this body, the President of Quincy College, Dr. Richter Cristofaro. Dr. D?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. The Finance Chair, Counselor McCarthy, and City Council President Nina Liang, and all City Council members. Also on Zoom, the hardworking and dedicated Board of Governors, Paul Barbidero, their Chair, and college professional staff, faculty, students, alumni, Advisory Board members, and the President's Leadership Team. Thank you for being on Zoom at this time. And what I'd like to do is just start out, as some school committee members may remember, you know, we have inspired Quincy. Well, I also think this is pretty inspiring as well.
Hello, I'm Steve Duner. I've been a professor here at Quincy College for 30 years. Quincy College has grown consistently throughout the time I've taught here. I started here in 1990, way, way back. And we occupied a little space over on Seville Road and the old Cottington Building, which is historic and was part of the Quincy College seal for many years.
Hi, my name is Jordan Ors, and I'm in the phlebotomy program at Quincy College. I chose phlebotomy because I wanted to get in the healthcare field. I've always wanted to help people and make a difference in the world. And I thought this was a great step and a great program to be a part of. Coming here has been awesome. Everyone's very friendly, outgoing, helpful. It's just a great start to have.
Hi, I'm Jim Peters, and I'm a computer science teacher at Quincy College. I think the future of Quincy College is going to be in its expansion into bachelor degree programs. It's going to be a wonderful improvement to our offering. It will give so much more opportunity to the people of Quincy and on the South Shore to be able to have such a convenient location to be able to get a full bachelor's degree.
Hi, I'm Barbara Cornell. I am the clinical supervisor for Quincy College's MLT Medical Laboratory Technician Program as well as the phlebotomy program. We have 100% employment rate for our graduates, so we're definitely helping the community. And when they go into the lab, our phlebotomists are frontline caregivers. They're often the face of the lab. They're the first person that a patient will often see. When our techs go into the lab to work as med techs, what people don't realize about what the job is is that 70% of medical decisions, 70% of medical treatment decisions are based on what our students, what our graduates are doing in the laboratory. So they have a direct impact on community care.
Hi, my name is Shanice Sanders, and I am in the MLT program. And I've been at Quincy College since 2017. After graduation, I would love to pursue a career in MLT. Not sure if it's going to be research or diagnostic.
Hi, I'm Dave Malley-Aaros. I think the graduates have a real advantage because they have such good hands-on training working in the manufacturing laboratory and in the QC testing laboratory. So they're getting a good feel for how to use the various types of equipment that are actually used in biotech companies.
Hi, I'm Daria Katusky. I have a personal interest in biotechnology. My son was born with a rare disease. And since that day, I have strived myself on educating myself to help him and help others like him. I was really fortunate that at the end of my program, I was given the opportunity to present to a board that was helping guide and steer the educational program that was at Quincy. And from that presentation, I was actually presented with an internship right then and there. That internship was at Cicada Pharmaceuticals. I started there as an intern in 2014 in the formulations group. And I have been there ever since. I have been through a few different promotions. And I have also transitioned to a different field entirely. I am now a test engineer for the Medical Device Center of Excellence.
If Quincy College had a new permanent building, I think it would not only build on that feeling that the college has always been here in the center and that it is a reliable part of the community, but I think having our own building would allow us to build real state-of-the-art labs and perhaps even a space for lectures, for a center, for not just the college, but for all of Quincy.
My name is Paul Barbidero, and I'm the current Chairman of the Board of Quincy College Board of Governors. Over the years, as a practicing attorney in Quincy and a former adjunct professor at the college, I have seen graduates from Quincy College everywhere in the community. As I look to the future of Quincy College, it needs a new facility in order to maintain that identity.
Bruce Ayers, State Representative. When my brother Chuck and I started our business together, Quincy College helped provide me with the right courses and skill set to grow our business over the last 35 years. Attending the courses at the college gave me valuable support. However, the college courses were spread out throughout Quincy Square. Our city is filled with a lot of history and pride. And Quincy College is an irreplaceable asset to our community, which deserves a permanent home for our students now and generations to come.
Well, thank you for watching. And you know, I'm obviously impressed by our participants and their sincerity about this incredible college. So thank you to all of the participants. And again, it's an honor to be here this evening as the President of Quincy College. Whether you have been a K-12 or a college student, you realize the indelible impression your learning environment made upon you academically as well as the social well-being. One of the most important elements in education is a feeling of permanence. The places where you educated felt like a second home that offered a sense of belonging, a sense of comfort, care, ownership, empowerment, and pride in your neighborhood and pride in your community. A permanent home for Quincy College will end decades of nomadic status, wondering where the institution will be next. Way back in the 50s, the initial discussion related to the college site were locations like South Junior High, Central Junior High, the Washington School in Quincy Point, settling for time at the Cottington Building, the Trade School, the Old Courthouse, Quincy High School and Vocational Building, Bethany Church, the yellow houses behind Quincy High School, 1500 Hancock, Saville Building, the Old Ledger Building and Temple Street and Newport Ave in on the parking way. Through all of these transitions, our municipal college, Quincy College, has endured. What I'd like to do this evening is talk about the status of the college as it relates to enrollment, as it relates to budget, academic initiatives, workforce development, Quincy College's economic contribution, a commuter college, and student life at Quincy College, and weave in thoughts of a permanent home for this institution. You know, back in 1958, in 1960, Quincy Junior College had less than 70 students. As we review past enrollment amidst the ups and the downs of the economy over the years, we fully understand that its enrollment is driving growth as well as have been responsible for declines in services, students, and budget. As you may be aware, community colleges in Massachusetts and nationally, enrollment is down from a year ago. Two-year colleges were hit the hardest by the pandemic and decreased over 18% from fall of 2019 to fall of 2020. Demographically, enrollment is down nationally among all gender, racial, and age groups. However, this decrease affected some populations more than others: men, Black students, Hispanic and Latino students, and adult learners. High school students that graduated in the spring of 2020 were two to three times less likely to immediately matriculate to college in the fall of 2020. So all of these patterns simply mean that rather than closing gaps in students attending and completing college, the gaps widened. Our college path was clear: to adapt to the changing needs, serve our current students and those that have been left behind. Though Quincy College enrollment has decreased, we were able to weather the fallout financially, working with the leadership of the Board of Governors, establishing a balanced budget, planning accordingly with staffing and resources. Our enrollment decreases did not disproportionately affect underserved in minority populations. And FY '20 to '21, Quincy College has actually seen an increase in these student populations. Increase in Black students enrollment, 22% to 23%. Increase in Hispanic and Latino enrollment, 8% to 9%. Increase in overall students of color, 41% to 44%. And an increase in women students. The slide that you'll see in front of you shares community college enrollments from obviously 2011 to 2020, but you know, we're focusing on '18, '19, '20, or 2019, 2020. And then on the right-hand side, the percentage of change. And in the fall of 2020, out of the 17 colleges listed, only two had less declines than Quincy College. The community colleges listed averaged an 11% decline as Quincy College was five percentage points below that. The college took a significant decline in 2017, 2018, and that was due to the closing of the nursing programs. Since that time, the enrollment differences from year to year have been 236 and 210. Our projections offer a less variance in enrollment in 2022. The other numbers that we could share, you know, by slide, but I did not, are numbers of the total number of students. Total number of students has gone from 7,000 to 6,000 and really down to 5,807 students, unique students. And the percentage of the unique students is 19% are Quincy residents. 1,127 of these students are Quincy residents. You know, our budget at Quincy College, you know, I think you know, we are not part of the state community college system. We have the ability to be nimble, innovative, and adaptable to partner with those directly in our city and community to serve their needs. It begins really with our budget. This chart, many of you have seen before. The labels have changed, but it really focuses on building a budget or a budget in deficit. So when we're building our budget, we take a look at students enrollment, our academic faculty, and then academic support, non-academic support, and into those expenses. So when we build, we build from the inside out. When we have a deficit budget, we'll budget from the outside in protecting the faculty, protecting students, and their support. The Board of Governors' timeline for the college budget process was revised to be more in line with other city of Quincy departments. We are planning two finance committee meetings, if needed, a public hearing, and a board vote on May 20. If we take a brief look back to FY '20, that was budgeted for a deficit of $1.8 million. With the assistance of the federal institution aid of $1.3 million, support of Mayor Koch and the City Council, in the tightening of personnel and expenses, we came very close to breaking even. Currently, as we look to '21 and with the Board of Governors and the administration, as we work toward another balanced budget in FY '22, we're projecting an $800,000 operating surplus, exceeding our expectations by $500,000. How we do that, we take a look consistently. And what this chart will show is that this is how we track our semesters. We also check enrollment on a daily, certainly weekly as well. And so this shows the semesters, each semester beginning in summer 2 to spring of '21. And then it just tells us what is the percentage achieved within the budget. So it shows that we're making progress. We made progress on each and every semester. You know, as we look at the FY '22 budget with our Board of Governors, we will again be focused on a balanced budget. And that's exclusive of any government aid packages. This will be something our regulators will be watching with interest to ensure that we are solvent and have a financial plan to strengthen the college independent of these temporary COVID relief funds. We believe that our FY '22 budget will strengthen our reserves to $10 million, which again shares with our institution that our institution is meeting regulatory standards required by the Department of Higher Education and our accrediting board, the New England Council of Higher Education, NACHI. Among the belt-tightening measures we have implemented was a consolidation of space, eliminating the use of two floors at President's Place. We did this to enhance, excuse me, we did this to enhance the student experience, making sure that our welcome center that we created at the garden level here at President's Place was ensuring that we identified budget savings, but it was created because our students would have far more attention coming in. It was like one stop enrollment shopping with admissions, advising, financial aid, and business associates being present all on that floor, all in welcoming, each and every student. The college spaces eliminated were administrative offices, student-faculty meeting areas, and special student program spaces. Our non-academic expenses in the form of rent to President's Place will continue to escalate and take away from important student and faculty services. We've realized that a new location will come with significant rent. We realize that a new location will come with that rent, but it will come with stability and consistency in paying rent back to the city budget. Academically, it was not a year of vacation here at Quincy College. We survived this pandemic with hard work. So during this pandemic, most of our college has been online. In the transition, through the dedication of our Quincy College faculty has been exemplary. Through the Quincy College Innovation Learning Hub, established this year to share best practices to address continuous improvement of online programming, faculty development, and student support. The hub's measure of success within this unprecedented online time is to ensure courses, student courses, that emphasize the cycle of inquiry, critical thinking, and authentic performance assessment. And to make sure we balance differentiated, personalized support with self-directed and autonomous learning. In order to emphasize and ensure consistent support to online learning, our faculty have all been trained in quality matters in internationally recognized organization dedicated to quality assurance and online learning. We also participate in the National Council of State Reciprocity Agreements, known as SARAH. And the agreement enables Quincy College to offer distance education courses and/or programs to 49 states. In the future, there will undoubtedly be a balance of online and in-person programs here at the college, but a professional development center in an appropriately well-designed new space will ensure continued student-centered and collaborative faculty initiatives. Our select programs, surgical tech, medical lab technician, phlebotomy, nursing, physical therapy assistants, their faculty and students were in person for much of their educational process. During the pandemic, many of these students will enter the workplace immediately contributing to Quincy College's number-one return on investment excellence. Of note is our associate degree in practical nursing programs. As we recruit for September, 41 RN students will be entering their second year. 41 RN students will be pinned on May 18. And another cohort of 42 nursing students will be entering their second year in September. Due to the success of the practical nursing program, we will be requesting full approval from the Board of Registration for Nurses. We look forward to expanding both programs incrementally for the next three years. During this unprecedented time, a significant academic and revenue-generating goal was to reconnect to our high schools, providing student opportunities and student pathways, especially to Quincy Public Schools, students, and secondly, to our Plymouth and others on the South Shore. The college's dual enrollment program offers rigorous college courses aligned and co-designed by college faculty and high school teachers to advance and honor students at low-cost, college-transferable credits. Within the Quincy Public Schools, right now, there are 128 dual enrollment high school students. Beyond that, in the South Shore, 274 students overall. Again, working with Quincy Public Schools Superintendent Kevin Mulvey, we have continued our academic, career, and technical pathways to higher education initiatives at no cost to students through Perkins grant funding. Pathways like this include early childhood education, computer science, and criminal justice with college faculty working with their Quincy Public Schools colleagues. In September, there will be an extension of these opportunities to healthcare technology linking directly to our nursing program and our allied health courses as well, and business finance linking to our very highly enrolled business program. Through the dedicated curriculum work of our faculty and administration and under the watchful eye of the Board of Higher Education, the Department of Higher Education, and NACHI, we will be initiating the college's first, the college's first baccalaureate program in business and finance, while keeping our current Year Two students, but also being able to recruit from other colleges. And I want to thank the faculty of this college that put so much time and effort into that, tremendous expertise and excellence. Another academic and revenue-generating initiative in support of the Quincy Public Schools is an early college high school program designed for Quincy and North Quincy High School. At this time, we have submitted with encouragement from the state an early college designation application to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Also, we have been working with the State Street Foundation since last July to discuss the possibility of State Street funding a grant to support early college high school in the city of Quincy. We are very, very proud to announce that we have been granted over a $500,000 grant that will offer staffing and other resources to our students and staff at both high schools to support this excellent opportunity for students and, of course, Quincy College. This program will provide a pathway to associate's degree or baccalaureate degree for a diverse and targeted student demographic: students that are low income, high needs, English learners, special education accommodation students, underrepresented students, first generation, and students of color. Students beginning in Grade 10 will have the opportunity to begin earning Quincy College credit again at no cost. This path to college will continue for Quincy and North Quincy High School students through grades 11 and 12. During their experience, there will be opportunities to engage in courses here at the college and be involved in transitioning activities. A new and permanent college building will offer a unique space for cohorts of Quincy's high school students, providing a seamless transition to college. When we look at other significant revenue generators in a college, we look at workforce When we look at other significant revenue generators in the college, we look at workforce development. At Quincy College, excuse me, revenue workforce development is a revenue generator, but also a partnership builder. This team successfully seeks and provides contracts for advanced skills training and training services to low income. Long-term unemployed and welfare recipients. For example, at this time in collaboration with Mayor Koch's office, the Quincy Planning Department, Mass Hire Career Center. The college is utilizing four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in CARES funding to enroll one hundred. And twenty individuals within data-driven, industry-based areas of employment. The goal is to train and employ forty-four full-time and part-time positions for Quincy residents. Last Thursday, our college travel team of admissions, advising and workforce development coordinator. Collaborated with Jim Marathus, Quincy Housing Authority Director. Counselor McCarthy, Word One Counselor McCarthy. Quincy Housing Authority staff in order to recruit over sixty German town residents to specific college programs. Emergency medical technician, home health aide, leadership development and diversity. Computers in the workplace, QuickBooks, healthcare foundation, substance abuse addiction, assistant certificates and phlebotomy. Our team is also recruiting online. Through career centers around the state. As well as partnering with over thirty Quincy and social businesses to bring up to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in potential training funds. To support unemployed or covid affected individuals to attend Quincy College programs. Workforce has successfully engaged in online contracts locally. And from around the state focusing on skills training as well as all college programs. A Quincy company, Best of Care, has employed sixty-nine of our home health. Aid program students, many Quincy residents. Partnering with addiction to recovery, we offer computer science, food service management and biotechnology coursework. Working with the Mass Office of Refugee and Immigrants to provide online financial literacy to Haitian, Creole or Mandarin immigrants. Signed a significant MOU with both nationwide unions. The National Association of Governmental Employees in the age. President Dave Hallway and their ten thousand members nationwide. AFL CIO and its president Steve Tolman signed an MOU to offer Quincy College courses nationwide to its twenty-five thousand members. Another online contract with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allows college Quincy College. To provide two online, no, excuse me, to provide two courses in English language in the classroom. To Quincy Public Schools teachers and those teachers in the state to offer this special online contract. We're going to start with Quincy Public Schools with their accelerated learning academy. This this July, this June with forty professional staff from the Quincy Public Schools. Another creative, successful contract this team has established is a first in the state on-ground skills training program. For pharmacy tech pharmacy technician certificate partnering with Walgreens Corporation in Quincy and in Plymouth for internships. And employment. An excellent opportunity for high school graduates and adults wanting of beginning to get into the healthcare field. Through another grant opportunity, many of our students are working with our internship coordinator. To teach job-related skills, to introduce students to many Quincy and social businesses. That's where they get their intern hours, experience and hopefully immediate employment opportunities. Our grant administrator also connects with community agencies. And businesses to benefit our Quincy College as well as the Quincy Public School students. For example, this summer. Amgen Foundation through its Amgen Biotech Experience Program. Will be donating materials, equipment, curriculum and training support. To our Summer STEM Academy. For high school students and middle high school science teachers. The academy will be free for all students and professional staff. Boston Scientific has also shared interest to cover any remaining costs of the summer session. Both Amgen and Boston Scientific would like it would like to be more involved. With Quincy College biotechnology education. For its staff and for Quincy Public School staff and students as well as others in the college service area. Some of the other college workforce development partners. We have this consistent connection to the community and to businesses, QCAP, Quarry. Asian American Civic Association, Department of Transitional Assistance, Beth Israel Milton. A new company in Quincy, All Cells Biotechnology Company, Brewster Ambulance, Gavin Foundation, Social Mental Health. Beth Israel Deaconess in Plymouth, Manet Health, Harbor Health, Atria Health. College Advisory Boards that we have, our faculty chairs, those advisory boards, they do an extraordinary job. They are great advocates. For this college, this community. And also the President's Community Council. It's something that I thought was very, very important for me to meet with a very small group of business leaders. And make sure that they can tell me exactly where we are going, why, when I share with them where we are. Our mission, our mission and where we're headed, I want them to say, you know what, maybe we should be doing this, maybe you should be looking at that. So along with the Board of Governors, this community is very small community business board of Jen White from Harbor One Foundation. Jim Dumphy, President of South Shore Bank, Janine Mudge, Communication Marketing Director Stop and Shop. Tom Harris, CEO Quincy Mutual, Rich Fernandez, CEO Milton Hospital, Cynthia Sierra, who you know very well. Manet Community Health Centers and Jeff Bellows, Vice President of Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation. This small group. Has said that they would meet with me three or four times a year to have more than one cup of coffee. And talk about the future of Quincy College as it relates to the business community. Wonderful people and something really people that I can really learn a lot from. The local economy benefits, I'm sure you've heard this before, that there's a study by UMass in two thousand nineteen. Where specific data shared regarding the economic contributions of Quincy College. To our city. Between direct and indirect employment, twenty-six point five million dollars in labor income is generated. A total of forty-nine point five million dollars output to the local economy. Quincy College supports local vendors by purchasing goods and services from businesses located throughout the college service area. As a result, the economic contribution is heightened because the college employees. Are local people who spend their wages in local business and keep dollars within our community. The college scorecard in the two thousand nineteen press release shared that Quincy College graduates ranked number one. As top salary earners among state colleges, state community colleges. And according to college statistics. Shared that Quincy College ranked number one in affordable Massachusetts colleges. There are over one hundred Quincy College residents employed by our college. And they are so very proud of the success of so many of our students. And collective contributions to our revitalized downtown and its businesses. This underscores a home in this desirable college location. That is so beneficial to so many. Want to thank when we talk about the economy and benefits. College Courses Inc. and Quincy College Trust, both very solid partners of the Quincy Public Schools. Both really give a lot of scholarships, between them fifty thousand dollars or more scholarships to so many of our students. I want to thank them so very, very much. You know, we talk about a new location. We talk about a physical structure for Quincy College student and community life. Needs to be a meaningful, very meaningful consideration. Our students need opportunities to be more a part of their college, spending more time on campus. To connect with each other. As well as to their studies. Some of the unique needs of our college student life that could be weaved into a new space could be that really sharp lecture hall. The student academic, student academic development center to support tutorial in math and writing with technology support. For those students that have accommodations through special education, community service and leadership. Childcare opportunities. Continuing our college athletic program and extending it as we are with men's baseball. With soccer and basketball for women and women and men's cross country. And having an area for Quincy College Community Business Partnership. So we can continue to share everything we are doing and make sure that our that our community is right, right with us. So you know, that's student life and I think it means so much, not only really to our students, but also to our community. You know, so many challenges. So many opportunities. Quincy's wonderfully unique, adorable municipal college. Had its roots within a seventeen hundred person petition in the nineteen fifties. Begun by elementary school parent teacher organizations. That's Quincy, by the way. With strong advocates from the Quincy School Committee. So typical of Quincy, so typical of educational and family advocacy. Quincy Junior College and Quincy College have made a difference to thousands of lives. But has never had its own home or sense of permanence. This city, this mayor, this council have been extraordinary in support of Quincy's City College. Your work, your dedication to our city. Involves so many challenges, so many opportunities. Funding a home for our municipal college, its community faculty, staff, administration and students of the future. Certainly is a challenge, but far more an opportunity. I thank you for listening. I thank you for your consideration, your discussion and deliberation. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was. Very familiar presentation in some some spots for me and a few others, but a complete presentation. Before I I lean towards my colleagues, I want to bring in Mr. Hines. To talk a little bit about the building, design and purchase along with Mr. Shea followed by Joe Shea. So. If we could, I'd like to go right to Paul Hines if Mr. Hines is ready.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, committee members. The Chairman McCarthy is correct. Both Joe Shea and I will be discussing other aspects of this proposal. Joe will be speaking to the efforts that have been made to date with regard to site selection and and design. My task now is to speak to one of the components of that, that new building, proposed new building in addition to the college. And that is replacement office space of a new city hall building. The new city hall, as we call it, was completed approximately nineteen seventy-seven at an estimated cost of four million dollars by the records of discern. It is quite dated and is in need and significant repair. Since it was completed, there has been very minimal accessibility upgrades to it, some interior finish replacements. And some petitioning off of what had been open floor plate office space into individual offices. With the exception of that, there's been literally no maintenance to this building. The building has got a number of code compliance issues and deficiencies. Throughout and it's actually I believe being surveyed as we speak for its lack of ADA compliance. Both with regard to entries and exits, office entries, bathrooms. Turnabout spaces in all regards, it's woefully inadequate and out of compliance may DA standards. The building has no fire suppression system whatsoever. A significant safety issue and a property protection issue. And certainly a risk to those who occupy the building, both employees and public at large. Likewise, the fire detection system is inadequate and not up to code as is the emergency lighting system. The HVAC system, more accurately described as an HVAC system, it has no ventilation. Little to no fresh air is brought into the building through the mechanical systems. And that mechanical system is failing and is inadequate and isn't properly zoned. And can't be properly controlled with regard to climate and temperature. The exterior skin of the building is a early generation window wall system that has failed throughout. There are a number of issues with that that I'll get into a little bit more detail. And the electrical system for the building is at capacity. Any further electrical demand cannot be met with the building as it stands today. So I did take the opportunity to speak with a couple of design professionals, engineers and mechanical systems. To project various cost aspects of upgrading and maintaining this building to code compliance standards of today. By going to particular on the on the building systems. The most important ones at this point are safety issues and climate issues of the roof. The window wall system and the and the heating system and the air conditioning system and the lack of ventilation. These are significant for building quality, indoor air quality issues and the health and safety of the occupants of the building. Not far behind that, you know, though it's not directly affecting public health. Is the ADA compliance, the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board compliance issues that we face. You know, every citizen has a right to access this building in all public areas fully. They cannot meet that. Not only do they have a right to do that, that is the law and we do need to comply with that law. One of the challenges is to undertake all of this work and it is significant work. It needs to be done in an occupied building, which is going to drive up costs, take a longer term to do. Risk the health and safety of the occupants. The other alternative is to close the building down temporarily relocate. The occupants and the services of City Hall, do the renovation and then move back into the building. As far as the numbers, again, I consulted with some professionals. The building is one hundred foot by one hundred foot by forty feet tall. It's basically ten thousand square foot per level and has a half basement. So the interior is about thirty-five hundred square feet. The costing is based upon that. Except in the roof, the roof is based on square footage, so the replacement of the roof, which is in severe need, is delaminated and subject to wind tear off. The cost of that is about thirty-five dollars a square foot or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The window wall system, that's the exterior skin of the building. Sixteen thousand square feet of that at two hundred and ninety dollars going rate square foot. Is four point six million dollars to replace the exterior skin of that building. Average HVAC replacement cost at this point is forty-five dollars per square foot. Based upon the square footage of the building, that's a one point five seven five cost, one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The unknown cost of that at this point is to remove the existing system, provide temporary heating, ventilation and air conditioning. While that system is being replaced if the building is in fact occupied. Plumbing costs associated with the ADA compliance issues and the HVAC upgrades is about seven dollars per square foot. That's a thirty-five thousand dollars square feet is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Again, as I mentioned, there's there's no fire suppression and no sprinkler system whatsoever in the building. The going rate of installing such a system is about ten dollars a square foot. Thirty-five thousand square feet of the building is a cost of thirty-three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But in addition to that, the water supply to the building would need to be increased. In order to provide sufficient pressure and volume to activate that system, I should activate. That's a cost we did not yet explore, but the cost that I sum up would have to be added to it would be that cost. And due to the limited capacity available in the current electric system. And the need, the absolute need to replace the HVAC system. The demand by that HVAC system will overtax the existing electrical system. The electric system needs to be upgraded, going rate in an occupied renovation is thirty dollars per square. Going rate in an occupied renovation is thirty dollars per square foot for the electrical and that's another one million fifty thousand dollars. Yet the building is presently served by one lone elevator. It is long past its design life. It is a maintenance headache, uh, and it's subject to frequent breakdowns. Uh, the replacement and upgrade of that elevator is estimated to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and during the time of that replacement, there would be no elevator serving the building and that work would take up to two months. So during that period of time, other occupied floors other than the ground level would have no handicap access. General construction costs on top of the cost per squ- square footage that was given to you, uh, the general contractor's costs in addition to that, that, uh, the, the construction and demolition issues and things with inside, it's about a sixty thousand, a sixty dollar per squ- square foot cost for another two point one million dollars based on the thirty five hundred square foot building, excuse me, thirty five thousand square foot building. Uh, these numbers that I reflect and suggest to you do not account in any way for a survey or abatement of the hazardous materials that are known to be in the building. Uh, I don't know who the hell this is. It also does not involve a cause for the removal of the existing HVAC system and the temporary system while the new one is being installed. Uh, it does not, uh, provide for the installation of the larger water system needed for the fire suppression system. Uh, and, uh, it does not provide for the demolition, the interior demolition of the building. So the cost that I cited above and with those exclusions comes to ten point, ten million four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And to that ten million, ten million dollars, we have to add a ten percent contractors overhead. That brings that figure up to eleven million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To that, you need to now add a ten percent contractors profit, which based on a eleven point nine million dollars brings the cost of the project up to thirteen million one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. With a construction contingency, you generally carry about a ten percent of, of project costs. Given a renovation, it's more along the lines of a fifteen percent contingency. It's a lot of unknowns and unforeseen circumstances. Adding that fifteen percent to the construction cost now figures as ended fourteen million six hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. Uh, and again, that's without the hazardous material survey or abatement, without demolition, without the temporary ventilation, without the new fire suppression water system service. Uh, and of course, before any of this work can be undertaken, there needs to be the design and the engineering of that work. Uh, based upon, uh, our history, the design and the engineering would include document preparation, specification detailing, bidding assistance and construction oversight. Uh, that with the renovation of existing building, that design cost is basically fifteen to twenty percent of a project cost. So with that fourteen six project cost and the added fifteen to twenty percent brings the projected cost further up by two point two million dollars to two point nine million dollars. Uh, and master of the law because of the size of this project would require that we retain an honest project manager. Uh, with commissioning services would be four percent of your construction costs, your project costs, which total five hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. So based upon the individual trades spoken above, the general conditions, the profit, the overhead, the design, the OPM and the commissioning, you're looking at a project cost from seventeen point four million to eighteen point two million dollars. And again, I would just reiterate, there's no hazardous abatement, no demolition, no temporary HVAC and no costs carried for the necessary, uh, increased water supply for the fire suppression system. So that's the, uh, for the survey of the existing condition of the last building, uh, with not bidding numbers, but quite accurate projections, uh, based upon the project manuals and, and trades manuals, uh, the economic, uh, impacts of them, the cost per square foot for building replacements and our conversations and meetings with, uh, design professionals and engineers. So with that, I would now turn it over to, uh, Joe Shea, Jr.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hines.
Yep.
Um, I'm Joe Shea. I'm with Granite City Partners or Real Estate Advisory right here in the downtown of Quincy. Um, and early last year I was asked to, uh, support the city of Quincy in the citing and programming of a new building. Uh, much like Commissioner Hines spoke, uh, we're at a conceptual stage. We're talking about the key issues for discussion and I'll take you through the process that we used in site screening, site recommendation and building programming. Uh, these discussions also will dovetail into a number of the, the issues that Dr. Divina, Dr. Cristofaro had brought up. Uh, this is a bit of a busy slide, um, but it breaks down the conceptual programming discussions to date, uh, for Quincy College on the left and Quincy City Hall on the right. Uh, for Quincy College, their existing space in President's Place is about eighty three thousand square feet net. Uh, that would equate to a hundred and twelve thousand square feet gross. And what you will see through these slides, uh, is the difference between net space and gross space, uh, by way of just a little explanation. Uh, net space is the space that you effectively use in this case for academic purposes, student engagement, administration, or on the city hall side for the departments, for the constituent services. It's, it's the classrooms, the offices, the laboratories. Uh, gross space includes the additional space that you need for items like stairwells and elevator banks and pipe chastes. Uh, so it is important that we track both of these metrics, uh, when we're looking to measure the existing conceptual program and forecast a future program, uh, to ensure that the building size is appropriate for, for the net. Uh, when we speak of the city hall possible replacement building, I think we would be remiss if we also didn't look to potentially add in a number of those departments, uh, directly linked to city hall elsewhere in the city, such as Veterans Affairs, the Health Department, uh, the Retirement Board, which is currently in the downtown, but not in city hall. Uh, and certainly the expansion of a number of the existing departments within city hall. So an initiative such as this at the conceptual stage does open the opportunity for some efficiencies in government to be considered, uh, and some relocations of some of the remote departments, uh, that right now are not within the city hall annex. So for discussion, uh, we have been talking about a future city hall component of forty five thousand square feet net, sixty thousand square foot gross. When you combine those together, we were, we were seeking a site that could house a building for somewhere around two hundred and five thousand gross square feet for the combined use. So through that conceptual program cramming efforts where Quincy Hall, Quincy College did theirs, um, and city hall did theirs with an architect, uh, that set the baseline for what we were looking for in, in the downtown. Uh, we screened six potential sites. Uh, hopefully through Zoom, this map, uh, is clear, although I've listed the sites on the next slide. Uh, but it was our express goal to say, stay immediately proximate to the MBTA station uh, in the existing city hall, Old Town Hall and Hancock Adams Common. Now, the graphic you're looking at shows where Quincy College currently is in a blue box, uh, and it shows the six red boxes labeled A through F. Uh, this is probably a clearer slide, but the six potential sites that we looked at and screened through this process, uh, was twelve twenty seven Hancock Street, commonly called the Monroe Building. Uh, we looked at twelve twelve Hancock Street. Uh, it's currently a Lumiere Day Spa across the street. When, uh, when I was growing up, it was the Elks Building in the city and I've always thought of it that way. Uh, we looked at twelve hundred Hancock Street, the current Citizens Bank and Fox Rocks Building. Uh, we looked at eleven seventy seven Hancock Street. It is an empty parking lot directly behind Tootie's Fine Jewelry, uh, known as the Monroe Lot. Uh, we screened the Nage Building Site on Bergen Parkway, um, as the only site that is not on the Hancock Adams Common side of the MBTA tracks. Uh, and we looked at thirteen fifty nine Hancock Street, uh, one of the historic town hall buildings between the historic Hancock Cemetery in the Stop and Shop Building. Uh, it's got a brain injury center in it right now. And these six sites were screened against a number of preset criteria, such as location, therefore proximity to the MBTA, proximity to parking, uh, accessibility for drop off and pickup and accessibility for construction materials to be delivered, uh, obtainability of the site and constructibility of the site, um, as it currently exists in what we all know is, is a congested downtown. It's a downtown we're proud, that's growing and changing. Um, they're not making any more land in the downtown, uh, but constructibility is a key factor for us. Uh, through screening those, these six potential sites, last fall and through the winter, the recommended site was twelve twenty seven Hancock Street, uh, which is the Monroe Building. Um, that site is in common ownership with eleven seventy seven Hancock Street, the Monroe Parking Lot. Uh, they, they basically come as a package, even though we were looking at them both independently. Uh, so the recommended sites that Granite City Partners had suggested to city hall were these two sites. These sites ranked very strongly regarding their location in the downtown, their location relative to the T, their adjacencies, uh, meaning their immediate neighbors and how that could facilitate, uh, a program that will work very well for the college and the city. Pedestrian and parking accessibility, uh, the size of the site, as for example, some sites were so tight or so landlocked, uh, they really weren't flexible for redevelopment or they were the wrong size and constructibility. An initiative of this size will be really a complex construction. Uh, and we will continue to talk about the, the constructibility of a site and how I fully believe the Monroe Building Site, uh, is the most constructible site that we looked Separate from the site selection, uh, the relocation process steps, uh, if this initiative were to move forward, um, has begun on a conceptual basis. Uh, from a relocation standpoint, a taking concept was prepared as to what could potentially go on the Monroe Site. Uh, because we knew that this initiative would be hitting the newspapers and, and the constituents with the tenants in the Monroe Building may have questions. Uh, in March, there was an informational meeting that was held with the Monroe Building tenants. All forty tenants were invited. Uh, we have also informally had one-on-one meetings with some of the larger tenants in the building so that they can ask questions and understand that if this initiative moves forward, what does that mean to them in their business? Um, a draft relocation plan and budget has been prepared for the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. Uh, this is the same process that the city has used several times now, uh, through the urban renewal or the public safety complex renewal projects where relocations are required. Uh, so we have a, a fairly strong, um, method that's now been well tested and well trusted by DHCD. Uh, and these, all of these initial steps, uh, were done to make sure that should this initiative be approved, a number of the key stakeholders are aware of what's happening. Um, moving forward to the right side column of this presentation, uh, if city council approvals occur, the city would go for a record taking at the registry within thirty days. And from a relocation standpoint, it is that going to record process that triggers a very formal process, uh, that many of the counselors are familiar with and have been through on our other projects. But all of the legal occupants are, are notified of the relocation of their rights, of the process, of the timeline. Um, the city would select an owner's project manager as Commissioner Hines had previously indicated. Um, there are a number of terrific owner's project managers in the greater Boston area who are very familiar with academic institutions, given, uh, the benefits of where we live. Uh, so I would assume that one of, that all of these OPMs would be very interested in supporting the city and Quincy College in this initiative. An architect would also be selected, uh, to advance the conceptual program and concepts that have been done to date. And we would expect all of that to take about a year, about a year to relocate all of the tenants in the building, um, get the OPM onboard, have a qualifications-based selection for an architect and have that architect advance the programs and bring forward some concepts. So the process, uh, at this conceptual stage would end with preparing a building schematic layout for a future council budget deliberation and approval. So we've got the, the citing process side and we've got the relocation, tenant relocation, constituent services side. For a timeline, uh, of the taking, relocations and concept, this is, this is purely, uh, for the purposes of discussion, uh, but if we receive city council approvals by June of twenty twenty one, that's our assumption and go to record. We've taken many of those action items from the previous slide and we've placed them onto this timeline. Uh, some of the key ones will be June twenty twenty would be a date that we would be targeting for the building to be vacated by all current occupants, uh, such that demolition could begin in twenty twenty two, excuse me, I said twenty twenty one, vacated in twenty twenty two, pardon me. That, that gives all of the tenants about a year to go through the relocation process. That also allows, uh, the demolition to begin in the fall, should the city choose, uh, and would put us on a timeline to be back before the council, returning to the council for, for an update and the next steps in the fall, so that in the winter of twenty twenty two, design plans and approvals for a new building are in motion. That is the timeline. Uh, the council order that is before you tonight for twenty three million dollars, uh, the council order has additional backup, uh, from what you see on your screen, but it breaks down as fifteen million dollars for the taking, uh, both parcels in common ownership. Um, I understand in your package, there is a memo from Solicitor Timmons, but the confidential appraisals and all of these reports are available in the solicitor's office for, for counselors to review. Uh, there's a six billion dollar relocation budget in the council package of that six, uh, four point eight, I think about five million is the tenant relocation and reestablishment budgets, uh, for the forty existing tenants. Um, one of the matters that we have definitely learned in the downtown, uh, is when we're dealing with restaurants such as Shira Punjab or Gunther Tooties, we want to make sure that we are, we are relocating them and reestablishing those restaurants appropriately. And that is a, that is a costly venture. A number of the blue collar businesses, very, very similar to Granite City Partners, where they may be a two hundred square foot single unit upstairs in a building like the Monroe Building can be relocated relatively easily and cost effectively, but restaurants, dentists' offices, uh, they take more time and more budget. Uh, the relocation expense breakdown also includes the legal and real estate costs, uh, and then it also includes a budget for operational support and property management as the building will be the, the, the city will be the property owner and manager for at least a year while those tenants are relocated. And then to Mr. Hines's point, a two million dollar budget for the owner's project manager and the architect's conceptual design work. Uh, he, he had quoted an awful lot of numbers, uh, but we're carrying, uh, two million dollars for that initial phase that would be most of the OPM fee, um, but just the first phase of the architect's conceptual design work. So the first council order is the appropriation for twenty three million dollars. Uh, the second council order, uh, is the order of taking for the two parcels. Again, in your package is a summary from Solicitor Timmons and in his office is a further detailed breakdown, uh, but you can see on your screen the size of the existing parcels, the zoning, um, and the, the taking process that I know this council has been through, uh, before in the downtown, public safety, even maybe going as far back as, uh, Hunt Street where we had the Creed and Field that we're quite proud. where we had the Creed and Field that we're quite proud of. This process is governed by Solicitor Timmons and Attorney Masterman. Following up on the details of the two takings, we have prepared a concept for discussion of a potential building. This is purely for us to discuss in terms of what could be. I told you we were targeting a site that could support a 205,000 or 210,000 square foot building. In the downtown, that would certainly be a high-rise or a tower, a steel building. And some of the concepts that we have prepared for discussion on the Monroe property would look such as this. So this is a rendering-looking self on Hancock Street. You can see historic Old Town Hall in the backdrop. And that building on the right, as rendered here, is a 16-story building where Quincy College would enter on the Hancock Street side and on the MBTA side, and City Hall would enter off of the Commons. This building that you see as a rendering before you, and I'll show you a couple other of the concept renderings. This would be the entrance from the MBTA side. So when you exit our Quincy Center Red Line Station, this is a night view. But the Quincy College entrance will be right as you come out of the MBTA. You will be welcomed by Quincy College and the Hancock Adams Common. From the Hancock Adams Common side, the looking directly down the common over our fountain would be the entrance to the City Hall. So this conceptual building, which is really only laid out on the outside, would have a common lobby that can be segregated so that the college can be open beyond 4:30 right into the evening. But the City Hall components have a separate entrance and lobby that can be segregated and locked at 4:30. This building, as you see it here, for the purposes of discussion, was sampled from the Granite Trust Building with the concept that these are our bookends on Hancock Adams Common. The historic Granite Trust Building tapers in as you go up to the higher floors, as does this building. You can see clearly from the architecture, we wanted to pay homage to the Church of the Presidents, to the historic pieces that are in the downtown Quincy, and make sure that the building is within harmony of the Hancock Adams Common and our beautiful historic nature. But we also wanted to make sure that it was a modern building. You know, these renderings are a concept of the outside of the building. Really, the success of this project is about laboratories and academic space, the space for students and faculties inside the building, as Dr. D. had so well articulated. And that bringing Quincy into the 21st century with a modern building, modern classes, not a retrofitted spec office building, really is what will make this successful. But these renderings, for the purposes of discussion, we prepared to ensure that people had a concept of what a 200,000-plus square foot building in the downtown could look like in scale and scope on a parcel such as this. So with that, that concludes the Granite City Partners portion of the presentation. With that, to you, Mr. Chairman. I will turn it to you or to Mr. Walker if he has any items to add.
No, I'll pick the ball up, Joe. Great job by the President on a great update on Quincy College and a great update by you and Paul Hines on the rendition and a lot of things that my colleagues and I can absorb over the next few weeks. I want to also forget my hard stop at 7:30 and go for at least another hour. I want to go around to my colleagues and get some comments and get their thoughts, and then we will we'll move on to the second item tonight. But let's go a little bit further. And I want to recognize, I know that Bill Harris, Councilor Harris from Ward 6, had a few questions. So, Councilor?
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. Good evening to my colleagues. Good evening to Dr. D. Christofaro, Mr. Hines, and Mr. Shay. Thank you for your presentation this evening. I have, I prepared three multi-question questions, three multi-questions that are longer than, I hope, I don't mean to take too much time. But normally, I'm very, very quick when it comes to my time. And if, this could be probably the longest that I've really probably asked and the questions that need to be answered, especially with this project. But I want to, I took notes during all the presentations and the notes that I really took was some of the things that really jumped out at me, and they're probably going to be in the questions that I'm asking. But I want to make sure that they're heard because if the questions are answered right the way that I feel that need to be for my vote, then I will, you know, definitely support. But I mean, this isn't going, this isn't something that we were going to jump at, obviously. But there was some, one of the first things that I circled on the top of my page was that Dr. D. Christofaro said that we were the number one most affordable. Quincy College was ranked the number one most affordable as far as I believe was the community colleges or colleges in the area. And that's really important, especially coming out of what we're coming out of in the world today. And I also wrote down, you know, that this, that Quincy College will be, you know, getting what the 11th and 12th graders from the State Street Bank, that $500,000 grant. I found that, I find that extraordinary. And one of the questions I'm going to be asking about is the RN program. And of course, and that is kind of close to dear to my heart because my wife being, of course, an RN nurse for more than the years that we've been married, and I don't even want to tell you that number. But, and my daughter, who actually attended Quincy College and got reimbursed from the 1199 SEIU. And that's obviously something that, you know, any of the unions, she was a CNA and then went on to Quincy College and then went to West Roxbury, I mean Roxbury Community College, where she got her degree in nursing and is now working in Boston Medical Center. And of course, the nursing program is the, is really the the heart and soul of what was Quincy College. And I just want to say that I also attended, I hate to say it, of course, my hair, I had a full head of hair. 30 years ago, I attended Quincy College when my daughter was nothing but a four-year-old who, back, and I went to the Cardington Building. And I was able, as a letter carrier, be able to go to school. My parents watched while my wife worked as a nurse at night, was able to go to college and try to finish after the many years of colleges and the different ones I went to. I'm only saying that I hope that Quincy College reached out to all the different unions, whether it be the 1199, we have CNAs throughout the, throughout the area. And as we rebuild the nursing program, which what I think is going to happen, that takes place. So I have, I have some, I have some credits at Quincy College. I was there for, so it's near and dear to my family's heart. And I'm going to ask some questions. It could be repeating what was said, but I want to, I think they're important questions because I was trying to like to erase what was said, but I want to make sure the points are made. And if I could ask Dr. D. Christofaro and like, is, doctor, are you there, kid?
Yes.
Yes. You know, the thing I was concerned about when I was reading through the information we were given, the Quincy numbers for enrollment are a concern to me. Historically, the percentage of Quincy students at the schools, today's numbers, are they better than the historic numbers going to happen?
As far as you mean, the students from North Quincy and Quincy High School?
Absolutely, yes. And I saw that we have the grant, but I
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's going to help out a lot. Obviously, grade 10 and 11 and 12, a pathway here. But I think, for whatever reason, that connection to North Quincy High School, to Quincy High School, South Shore High Schools, Plymouth, where we have campus, really has not been strong in any way. And what we're trying to do with this early college high school grant, with the dual enrollment, with the career pathways, is kind of get the students, both from both high schools, as well as the guidance staff, principals, to make sure that our voice is heard at both schools in a very consistent and appropriate manner. So I mean, I think we can, we can do that. And I think we will definitely increase with early college high school because you're talking about possibly maybe 200 to 250 students at each high school that are involved in this process. So that's the pathway, you know, that we want to really get going and keep connecting with these high schools.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern. Because if we're going to support this type of investment, I want, I want to know that we have a focus on attracting and maintaining Quincy kids and Quincy folks that are in the work model. And I was one of those people that were in the work, were in the work model. And when I hear, you know, I don't know if anybody realizes this, that any, any city of Boston, and which is great what we're hearing about, you know, Quincy College, any of the City of Boston kids that graduate from from high school in the Quincy City school system, they actually get to go to any community college, state community college for zero. But obviously, that would be a big undertaking, seeing that Quincy College is part of Quincy. But I believe that the fact that that actually sets up when we talk about low income, low income, the things that we're talking about today, giving folks the chance to be able to, you know, even the kids that are in high school right now, that, like myself, I came out of high school and I didn't know what I wanted to do, to be honest with you. And, you know, and I had dreams of doing some things, but they just weren't reality. And, but with Quincy College, you could go to school and just figure out what you're going to do. And I know that that has been the history of Quincy College. And like myself, I actually went back 10 years later. And I was proud of that. But I appreciate that aspect. That was only question one. So I'm not letting you off the hook, doctor.
Okay, that's all right.
And again, as I mentioned about the nursing program, which is near and dear to a lot of folks. We have a lot of nurses that are out there that many, many years ago, they became associates. And then, but in the nursing program nowadays, as a nurse, you really cannot be an associate. With an associate degree, you really cannot, you have to keep continuing on. And especially with, you know, the nursing program. What I wrote down earlier was, you know, over the years, this became, you know, Quincy College, that was the crown jewel of Quincy College, was the nursing program. And that being said, you know, the driving factor of the troubles of the schools peaked a couple of years ago. And how we have explored that these same issues that occurred in the nursing program do not happen again. And what is the current status of the program? Again, I think you've touched base on this 41 RNs being, graduating on the 18th. Am I correct? I wrote that down as a side note. And what is, what's the status of the program? And what are we doing to make sure that no single program can have such a large impact on the college financial stability?
Yeah, Counselor, thank you. If, the nursing program, again, you're right. You know, 41 nurses will be penned on the 18th, which is a really great thing for them and for the program. And 42 RN students are coming to fill that second year program. And now we're recruiting, you know, for our year one RN students. So we should probably have about the same, maybe a bit of an increase. Not sure. But I'm really a person that would rather, much rather, start slowly and increment, you know, incrementally increase a program, making sure that we're doing what we need to do for each and every one of those nurses, student nurses. Making sure that we have the high-quality faculty, which we do. You know, making sure that our class size is exactly what it should be. All of these, all of these kind of items that may be more managerial, but the bottom line is that you have to keep an eye on these programs. And that's why we do such a good job with enrollment. That's why we do so much with shared decision-making within our nursing program. Listening to our students to tell us and tell the faculty, this is how we see our education going so far. They're our clients. And I think you need to, you know, we need to make, we all need to understand that they pay our salary. And it's all about our students. And I think program to program, we need to take a look and see where we are, where we were, where we are, and where we're going to go. But you don't have to rush a program into a place where maybe we're not doing what we really should be doing for each and every one of our student nurses.
Right. That, that's, that, that answer, that really truly touches base with that because you're absolutely right this. You know, just getting it right instead of rushing is important. And my last one, it's not as, not as long, but, but can you give me a more detailed explanation about the bachelor degree program? You mentioned starting this fall. But what's the long-term plan with the bachelor program? Because, you know, I mean, a four, you know, it became, Quincy College years ago became a four-year school. But how much of what we're talking about today is related, related to being able to offer a more advanced degree program?
Yeah, I can't really talk a lot about the past necessarily. But what I, what I will say is that when we started talking way back in September as a leadership team, talking about where we're going and completing a vision that's best for our students, best for our college, you know, we started to really say, this is what we are going to do. In order to get that started, before you have faculty do so much of their tremendous work, you know, what we have to do is you have to go to the Board of Higher Education. You have to go to NACI, who work together somewhat, maybe not a lot of times simultaneously, but going to them and creating relationships with them through our senior leadership that explaining to them what we want to do, how we want to start, you know, what our enrollment is, say, in business. And then begin when they say, you know what, okay, this is the process. You know, as they come out with the process, they don't say you have approval tomorrow. Everything you have to prove, which I understand and I applaud. So I think that what happens is you go to the bureaucracy, the state bureaucracy, the NACI accreditation people, and you really make sure they understand that this is something, that this is all college. We are into it and we want it to succeed. So then you really kind of survey, survey faculty, survey our students to see what, where they are. What are the students? Are the students willing to stay here? And the answer is unequivocally yes, our business students, you know. So that's one thing. And then ask our faculty. They're the ones that drive the bus in so many ways. So we have to make sure that the faculty says, yes, we can do this and this is what's going to happen when we do it. And I think they've done a tremendous job. And I think the Board of Higher Education, I think NACI, really understands, you know, through our senior leadership and Dr. Yatton, that she's got this relationship, that they really covet what she has to say. And Dr. Yatton has a great relationship with our faculty. So that's why you can move forward. And I don't know if that was done before, not done before. It doesn't really matter. What matters is now. You know, what matters is the mission and the vision of the college, which matches, I think, perfectly with the baccalaureate. And what which matches, I think, perfectly with the baccalaureate and what you said about our high school connections. Making sure that these students know how affordable, how caring, and making sure that they can really do very, very well, coming here for two years and now coming here for four years. And what we hope is working after the business gets going, we learn what to do, how to do it. Maybe we look at another area. But before we do that, we go to faculty, we go to our students and see where they think we should go, take their advice and move forward.
Thank you, doctor. That, that, you know, I know that I, I've focused on, on basically probably the, the curriculum and the, the, the future of, of what's gonna take place at the college itself. And I appreciate, you know, your, your answers, your, your presentation tonight. And I know my colleagues will probably touch base and probably drill the other two folks, Mr. Shea and Mr. Hines, over the logistics of, logistics of the, actually the building and the taking and, but I'm, I think that it's very important that we have as a city, continue to have Quincy College, continue to have the opportunity as we speak about equality and the folks that, that really, really need a chance. And when I see that it's the number one most affordable, that is very important to me. And, and thank you, doctor, for, for, again, and thank you Chairman Makati. I'm, I'm all done. Sorry, taking a little time. I think this is the most I ever, I ever took at a council meeting.
It's a record. It's a record.
It is a record.
It's a record.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Palmucci, then Counselor President Liang, Counselor Mahoney, and then Counselor Kane. So Counselor Palmucci, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Di Christofaro and Mr. Hines. I, I think, Dr. Di Christofaro, this is the first time you're appearing before us as, in your current role, right?
That's true.
Yeah, well, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
I, I was having a discussion with someone earlier today about the subject of this meeting. And I, I'd said to them, and I'll repeat to you because it's a nice thing, that I can think of no better person to lead Quincy College during this time than, than you. So I'm, I'm very pleased that you're in the position you're in. And I'll tell you, in terms of the considerations that, that, that happened in my head for this, it means a lot that you're there and you're, you know, you're driving the bus, right? I have a lot more confidence in the long-term prospects of Quincy College now than, than we did. And I'm not, and I'm not, before anyone yells at me, I'm not dragging on Bellotti. I think we're in a much better, I think we're on a much better track. Yeah, in, in part due to former President Bellotti's efforts as well as yours.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll stop saying anything nice before I get myself into trouble. Let me just begin by saying that I think that there's tremendous value in Quincy College. And I think it's an intrinsic value to Quincy that really can't be measured in dollars. It provides, as you mentioned, it provides a low-cost alternative to the university system, which makes it available to more people as the statistics you provided demonstrate. And especially with the course offerings that, that are there, that are geared toward employment. Community colleges and Quincy College serve as an important path for economic empowerment for the, for the underprivileged. So it really, it really hits on every note in terms of who it impacts. And with an average of about 20% of students who are Quincy residents, it serves as a valuable resource for Quincy residents and for the community. For me, this discussion isn't about any of that, though. We're in a finance committee hearing, discussing a bond authorization request from the mayor. This is 100% about money, and that's it for now. Ultimately, whether I support this request will depend on the response, the, the, the general overall response that I get to one question that I have in my head, which is whether Quincy College can be saved. You know, is the trajectory down or up? And whether it's worthy of, financially worthy of this type of investment, given the many demands on our public, public dollars. So just a couple of questions that I'll run through. So the, correct me if I'm wrong, the the Powers and Sullivan audit indicated that in fiscal year 2019, the college's financial value was negative 17.8 million? Does that sound about right?
I'm honest, I'm really not sure of that, counselor.
Okay. There's 23 million in assets for the retirement benefits, right? And then seven point, no idea on these ones.
I am so sorry.
Okay. Mr. Walker, is Mr. Mason a part of this discussion?
He is counselor.
Okay. Mr. Mason, do you, do you, do you know these numbers?
I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the broadly counselor.
Okay. So essentially, the fiscal year 19 audit put the value, the financial value of the college at a, a significantly negative number, correct?
Correct.
All right. And that was taking into account assets and liabilities, just in a pure financial?
So it, it's employing a GAAP-based accounting, which is not traditionally the type of accounting that's used in government. Government uses a type of accounting called G A S B. And that's because the, how liabilities are expressed in GAAP-based accounting don't fit well to how public institutions have to operate. So I, I would be, I would be surprised if there's any public entity in the entire United States that has a positive valuation based on GAAP accounting.
So tell me why.
That's because of how our pension systems work. As I think most counselors know better than I do, the argument between defined benefit, defined contributions in the forward valuations that are put on in GAAP-based accounting to these obligations become liabilities expressed today, but they have no future revenue value. So in GAAP-based accounting, you'll have a lot of liabilities, but you'll have these assets that produce cash over time. They'll balance out. In, in G A S B, we express this in something called the G A S B 74, which deals specifically with these types of benefits going forward. When you try and apply GAAP-based accounting to municipalities, they always, municipalities, public entities or anything, they always show a negative valuation because we're not allowed to express the ability to engage in these public activities in the long run as today assets. It does create a, and I'm not saying GAAP, we, we use GAAP all the time, our credit ratings use GAAP. I believe the city would have a negative valuation, I can, I'm actually fairly certain about that. Every municipality does because we can't express our assets today as a total value. But if you had, say, like GE, you had a large company, there are assets that they're gonna use to make money over that time period, those liabilities are due, would show as a positive on that side of the equation.
All right. Now, our asset on the city side would be future tax revenue in part, right?
In, in part, yes, yes.
Okay. Listening to your response made me think of that game Baldur Dash, where you just make up things. And then you either tell the truth or make up things, and then people have to guess if you're telling the truth. And I kind of felt that way. Like, is he just making this whole G A S B thing up? I'm gonna Google it after the meeting, but it was a great answer. There was a great answer. Okay, so once we take on the bond to facilitate their new home, and again, from a financial perspective, we're essentially taking on, and we add the health, you know, and you add in that we paid the health insurance costs last year, this year. And we have the bond authorization that we're not voting on tonight, that takes over their pension liability. Essentially, the city will have to back the college up financially. And I know that we already do, right? But we're, we're doubling down essentially because we're putting more money into it. But the, the taxpayer is the backstop for all of that, right? Especially with this, we're just, because we're going deeper in terms of our financial commitment to the college. But we're, whether we build this building or not, the taxpayer is the backstop for all of that, right? The pension liability, the health insurance costs, right?
Yes.
And I don't know if this is best for you or Dr. Di Christofaro, but the, the college has been operating at a deficit for fiscal year 2018, fiscal year 2019. 18 operated at a loss of 150,000. And then if you included the O P E B, it was 750,000. And then 2019 operated at a loss of 5.6 million, and 8.7 million if you included the O P E B. So essentially, that means that the college is spending more money than it's bringing in, right? Or is that, or is that due to the, the G A S B accounting?
No, I, I would, to get into granier detail, I believe Dr. Christofaro would be probably, or his team would be better apt to answer it. But your interpretation of that is accurate. There's not a GAAP or the net operating income. Is a difference, what becomes important in looking at those, when looking at any income report, is what's driving the deficit? Is it expansion of capital? Is it one-time costs within those years? When we talk about operating expenses versus non-repetitive expenses, that can make a net, that's how like a company like Amazon doesn't pay taxes. Nobody would say Amazon's not worth anything.
Right.
It's, it, it's a different style. Depends on what's generating those costs and what's generating those, actually, in a lot of cases, those revenues too. To, yeah, correct interpretation out of, but the granulation I would need to further millerize myself better with.
Yeah, if I, counselor?
Yeah.
If I could, just to, when we take a look at the, you know, the real kind of downturn, the college, you know, really, you know, I think it was a point that it may have been at the time overemployed for the enrollment. Maybe there wasn't enough attention given to balancing the budget with, which this Board of Governors is demanding right now and directing, and we absolutely agree. So the last two years, we're talking, going into 22, is a balanced budget. And we need to be really, I mean, we're, we need to let you know much more readily. You know, whether it's three or four times a year that I come and I talk about how we're doing, what the status is in all the different areas, and hear questions like this, you know, to give you the appropriate picture. When we talk about our regulatory agencies, when we talk about N E C H, the Board of Higher Education, when we talk about expanding our reserves to $10 million, those are really good, solid signs. When we talk about an $800,000 operating surplus going into 22, another really good sign. But we do know, and you know, counselor, that enrollment drives the bus at Quincy College. So that's what we are focusing on. However, when you look at other revenue streams, when you look at early college high school, when you look at workforce development and the incredible work of workforce development, bringing in over a million dollars a year to, to, to the budget. So there are ways to offset any declines in enrollment, and we have to keep working with those and be a stable, but stable plus. And I think that's really where we're headed. And I think if we look back, you can always look back, you know, but to look where we are now and look forward, I think we're in far better shape. And I think as a college, you know, we all know, we all know of what we need to do to make sure that this city understands that Quincy College is stable, it's consistent in budget, and delivers an incredibly service, an affordable service to so many in the city. To reconnect again with our high school students is absolutely critical. It increases earned revenue, increases enrollment, but increases the pathway. So that's what we're looking at. And, you know, we can go back again, you know, we talked about the nursing, how that happened, and will it happen again? And the answer is simple, never, ever will happen again. We do things incrementally. We build slowly, you know, here. And that's what we'll continue to do with all our programs. So that may answer your question.
No, it does. No, it does.
Go back to Eric on that one.
Yeah, no, no, it's, no, that answers my question. So you're fiscal, and I heard you say that earlier too in your presentation, that you were, you had a surplus of 800,000 in fiscal year 22. But it, so I mean, the only, the, the materials that we were sent show the deficits.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. No, I'm glad you explained it. Because obviously, that's a concern, if you're spending more than you bring in, you know, in general, that's a concern. What's the average maticulation, is that the right word, maticulation time? How long does the average student stay at Quincy College?
We, I, I believe it's the, it's the two to three years type of thing, that, that span of time.
And what's the, what's the average that someone's paying in tuition per year?
Oh, great, great question, you know. I would say, yeah, what is it? About 7,000 to 8,000, maybe? Yeah.
Okay. And so about the space, right? So I, so I was projecting a 30% increase in space. So can you explain to me why, why we're building 30% extra capacity when the direction of enrollment is heading in the opposite direction, it's decreasing? And I, and I guess we have to trust that it'll increase, so I, I get that. But, you know, this year you have, what, 30%? We're taking online classes even though in-person classes were available. So tell me, I guess, what, why, why the 30% increase in space? What, why?
Well, I'm not really, the 30% is any increase in space, you know? When we look at what we don't have here, if you wanted to just take a look at what, what we're in need of. I mean, I think we need the spaces that are unique to our students. Do I think we'll increase? Yes, I do. And you know that, you know, I'm gonna say that anyway, right? But bottom line is that, you know, what, what we need is more specificity for our students. We need more space, particularly for students, whether it's our, our veteran students, you know, whether it's our international students, whether it's our students, I think, in student success, that, you know, you need accommodation areas, you need privacy for these students, you need tutoring for these students, and it all comes with space. You know, a student lounge, and it sounds, you know, it's like you said, it's immeasurable in a sense, you know, talking about our students. But when you think about a student union, when you think about a lecture hall, you think about what other colleges, even commuter colleges, may have, that's the upgrade. Now, that's not guaranteeing an additional, an additional enrollment, but I think the more you do that, just like that location. The location, and all I can see, I can see our students sitting out on the green, whether it's small group classroom, or it's studying, or going to get a cup of coffee or whatever, I see that. But I also really see that other colleges have certain programs, certain spaces, and maybe some of the spaces we have now, we won't have. So I, I think it's a give and take. And as you know, you know, with, at South Middle School, at Central Middle School, and at Quincy High School, all brand new, we did the same thing. We took a look at what we really need. So this could be a totally different, I mean, working with students, working with faculty, working with the Board of Governors, working with the city council, to decide with this increase in space, how do we use it that benefits our students, right? And also, you know, really works towards student success. And, and I think there are things we can do that maybe we eliminate here and use more space over there. But I think that's gonna come through a lot of discussion. Certainly, not to throw, just use space to use space, that's not what I would do, nor what the city council would ever want, or the Board of Governors. I just think that we need to go slow, take a look at the space. Is it about enrollment? Yes. But is it all about enrollment? No. It's about focusing on students, their programs, their uniquenesses, because that is gonna drive the enrollment bus as well.
Right, it's the culture and the identity.
Yeah.
Okay, last question for Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, why, why wouldn't we seek to build a theater space here? A community theater space here and tie it in with the college? You know, where it could be used during the day for a, for a giant lecture hall or something like that? Has there been any, any thought to that?
There was, counselors, you, you may know that we had contemplated the theater space that would stretch back over the tracks in the very same vicinity. We did some initial cost analysis on that, and it was prohibitive based upon the needs of such a facility. You know, I, I think that this piece came before. I think we started working, the mayor started working pretty hard on this location and the siting of the college building prior to the effort really getting kicked off on the Performing Arts Center, that this is a prime location for the college building, plus the city offices. And the discussion relative to the performing arts space sort of took us in, in different directions. It's not to say there can't be a space in, in this building that would service some of those things. But in terms of floor plate, in terms of needs, you know, the preliminary discussion we had about potentially combining the two things, it, it, it just didn't make a lot of sense from both a cost and a practicality standpoint.
Okay. I think, I just think that, you know, that adds to some of what Dr. Christofaro was talking about in terms of like culture and, and identity of the school to have that, those kind of spaces and, and, you know, access for the students to use that. and, and, you know, access for the students to use that. Mr. Walker, are we, are we selling twenty-four Seville? As part of this?
I'd have to get back to you on that one. I'm not a hundred percent sure with the, on that, Counselor.
Because that's, I mean, I was looking up today, the assessed value of that is five million. So, I mean, that's last year's value. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure it's, it's quite a bit more, but even if you use it, value it at five million, if, and that, the city has the deed to that, is my understanding. So it would be within our purview to, to sell it. Or if there's some other use that the city can save money by not purchasing a building or something. And then the six million dollars in relocation, did you guys give any thought to retail on the first floor? Keeping retail on the first floor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Counselor, that is not a, give a thought past tense that is continuing to think of going forward. Anything we're talking about, the actual building, future building itself is conceptual nature at this point. But those conceptual discussions have included the potential of retail on the first floor of the college slash city office building.
I mean, I could see how, you know, a lady's formal wear shop might not work. But I mean, I, I gunned through two D's, or, you know, the cell phone store, all that stuff is, it fits in with a, you know, with a kind of campus vibe. So, okay. That's all I have. I, I, if you could get back to us with the, whether or not we're going to sell the Seville building, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Palmuccio. Great questions as usual. Chair recognizes President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to confirm, right, we're, we're not hard stocking at eight o'clock, are we? I just want to be respectful.
No, we're gonna keep it rolling, try to go through everybody, you know, you know, I, we're gonna come back at least two more times, President, on this, you know, so take your time.
Thank, no, thank you. I just want to be respectful of that, my two other colleagues.
Take your time.
No, thank you. So, good evening. I just want to just try to be as brief and direct as possible. So first and foremost, Dr. D, and, you know, all of you in the mayor's office, and frankly, everybody on the board at Q C and the faculty who are here, I just want to thank all of you, the passion and, you know, the, the, really the energy and belief that you have behind this vision and the work that all of you have been doing to realize that is really evident in your presentation tonight. So I just want to thank all of you and recognize too, the work that it takes to put all of that together to bring in front of us this evening, and the fact that all of you are here to support that too, something I appreciate. I also wanted to say thank you for the acknowledgement and the recognition this evening, talking about specifically addressing and supporting the diverse population that we have here in the city. I, you know, very obviously and clearly, I think folks know, have a different approach on how I think we can serve the diversity and the diverse population here in the city. But the fact that it's even being recognized is something that's a priority, is something that I'm grateful for. The other thing I just want to pin quickly is that when referencing the different diverse populations at the college, just that Mandarin specifically is a language and not necessarily correct to refer to as an immigrant population. So just moving forward in future presentations, you know, just making sure to reference them not as Mandarin immigrants, but Chinese immigrants. And I bring that up also just to say that it'd be really helpful for me just to, you know, as we're moving forward and getting materials, to get a breakdown of the population at Quincy College, just so again, for us to know exactly what that looks like. Moving forward to more of a practical lens at which I'm approaching this, right? I just sort of, you know, given my background, I come into this looking at it, you know, not for the things I just mentioned, but more so as, again, the sort of practical lens of buying a business, right? And to, to that end, that's what's really driving some of my questions here, and then hopefully some of the questions that will be answered, leading into future meetings. And the first is, when we were looking at the presentation by Paul Heinz about the, the timeline, it referenced specifically that for the building being vacated, that if and when it's going to be approved, there's a year out for the businesses there to, you know, to have that kind of time and space to vacate the building. So, you know, the timeline that was proposed said June, I apologize, maybe it was Joe that said it, not Paul. But in any case, it said June, right? So June twenty twenty-one, if approved, then they have, all the tenants have until June twenty twenty-two to vacate. So regardless of when the approvals happen, whether it's June, or September, or next January, whenever it is, they will always have that year, correct? Like, that's gonna be, it is, okay.
That is correct, Counselor, yes.
The next thing I wanted to ask is for the timeline, you had also mentioned that in fall twenty twenty-two, should this go again according to that, that timeline that was proposed, that there's going to be new approvals brought in front of the council? Do we have any estimate as to what that looks like as far as a number goes?
So the, the new approvals that, through you, Mr. Chairman, but the new approvals that would be brought forward would be an, an update on the architectural design. The architect will then have, have advanced detailed design drawings. A building of the magnitude that you see a two hundred thousand square foot tower in the downtown, it is a hundred million dollar building. People should be aware of that. It is, it is definitely a six-digit plus type, excuse me, nine-digit plus type building. But those would all be developed by the architectural team and the O P M team.
Okay, so then the new, the new approvals would be the architectural designs that, we don't necessarily have to approve the designs, where we would be approving the costs that come with those final designs, correct? And we're looking at about, you said nine figures for that?
Correct.
And that's on top of the, is it thirty-eight million dollars total for the, the building, buying the building and, and having it being vacated?
It is not as, the purchase of the building is fifteen million, and vacating the building with all the associated costs is six million. So that puts us at twenty-one, and then we've, in the council order, we've included consultant fees for the O P M and architect to start the process at two million. So it's twenty-three million dollar council order ask now.
Oh, I was doing the math incorrectly. Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then, just another practical question, and I think this might be a question more for Paul. I guess, Joe, you can answer it too, if you're talking about the construction manager. And I, I tend to, you know, try to, to talk to you guys about this a lot when we're bringing on new projects, particularly of this size, right? Is that there is, you know, of course, always a capacity issue, right? Like, we, we can only employ so many people, we can only put so many people physically on a project. There's only so many hours a day and so many in a week. So to that end, you know, we have the Public Safety Headquarters that's moving online. We have, you know, a number of capital improvement projects that are coming in front of us and are already rolling from the last five years. And then, you know, on top of that, there are some buildings I know in the city from the last previous years of capital improvement projects that we wanted to see happen that were approved by the council, like the improvements to the libraries, the improvements to, you know, the different firehouses across the city. And so I, I imagine, I don't want to be presumptuous, Paul, maybe you can elaborate on this, where are we as far as the completion of existing projects? And then capacity-wise and bringing on new projects, you know, there was animal shelter, there's the new, again, the Public Safety Headquarters, we've got the communications tower, and now that, so I'm just looking at this and understanding too, that, you know, we all only have unfortunately so much capacity with twenty-four hours in a day.
Thank you for acknowledging that. And, and you are correct, and, and both Joe made reference to an O P M and owner's project manager with regard to the new construction. I made reference to one in this presentation with regard to oversight of an alternative renovation of the glass building of City Hall. So you hit a threshold, and under Massachusetts general law, they require that a professional outside owner's project manager be retained. So both of these projects would require that. We've also now have on board the owner's project manager that will be doing the Christopher Learning Center at Old Colony Avenue, our higher need school. We have the owner's project manager on, on, engaged and working on the animal shelter project. And of course, is the O P M on the Public Safety Headquarters project. So all these more significant, larger projects, and even some of the middle, middle-tier ones, do have owner's project managers who run the job on a day-to-day basis, oversee the contractors, keep them to the schedule, double-check, look over their shoulders, watch for budget overruns, watch for long-term lead item ordering, make sure that they, they're able to keep to their, to their timeframe. They do the reporting, they report back to myself, they report back to T C A M. So there are a number, there are a lot of projects in the pipeline, you're absolutely correct. But these larger ones have that professional management. So then they report back to me and my department. So we're not generally out there running day-to-day, running those jobs. The professionals are doing that. Because you are right, we do have a limited capacity, you can only go so far, or you're neglecting other work. And that's one of the purposes of the O P M. It's to get the best bang out of the tax dollar, to keep in each individual job on time and on schedule and completed as quickly as possible. But it also allows those professionals to manage each of your projects. That allow the department staff to oversee the O P M. So it's a, it's a middle-tier, as-needed management level for all those projects. It's not a permanent employee as you suggested. So those major projects that's happening, you mentioned the radio tower project that's been handled through T P L and the Fire Department. I'm not involved in that in my department, I really can't speak to that. I am involved with regard to the antennas that are being installed as part of that project on the public buildings. We're coordinating that, making sure that they're not being offensive visually and aesthetically what that they're doing for their practical needs. There's other smaller projects that we are overseeing in-house. Currently, we're doing a recarpeting job at the main branch of the Thomas Jane Library, and Don Martin, Walter McDonald, in my department, are working on that one directly as owner's managers. It doesn't hit the level to require one. They've got their, Walter has a construction supervisor's license, they have the logistics training, and they're working with that with Dave Scott to isolate sections of the building. So we tent it off and shut down the H V A C system, ventilate the buildings to outside so we don't make a noxious or offensive atmosphere within the building. So we have capacity to do in-house many of these smaller and mid-range projects. The, the, the middle tier and up are professionally managed, and that's, is what's happening.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, and I appreciate you elaborating a little bit more than what I just asked, but that brings me to actually a question that would be great if, I don't know who could put this together, but it would be really helpful. Because again, for me, it's not just the financial capacity, it's the, you know, also the, the resources capacity, right? I remember, you know, there was one year we opened three restaurants in one year, and we didn't sleep, right? And to that end, like, we want to make sure, again, everything's interconnected, right? We, we want to do these projects, and yes, they're exciting, but do we have the financial capacity? Do we also have the actual, you know, human capacity to do this? And so it'd be really helpful prior to our next meeting if, you know, for me anyways, if I can get a list of the existing projects, you know, to this kind of size to date, and what the status of them are, and also the different departments that are working on the project. Because again, it's all, it's all connected, right, in some way? Yes, this is a project, you know, for a building, but it is going to also impact, I imagine, the roads and then the sidewalks in and around that area, which will also then impact Chris Cassani's department, right? Do you know what I mean? So, you know, at that point, there's, again, all the departments necessarily intersect at some points, and that does, again, speak to capacities. So that would be helpful for me just to see a breakdown of, you know, what projects right now, specifically for the public buildings are out there, what the status of them are, and what buildings are, or what departments are interacting with them. But thank you, Paul. The next question I have is, again, this is information that I'd like to see prior to the next meeting. Is, again, I'm approaching this as buying a business, right? And when doing so, you look hopefully back at the last five years, what the numbers look like, and then projecting out for the next at least three years, right? And looking at, you know, the, the students are our customers, okay? You're spending money on retention, but you're also spending money on growth. And so with that understanding, what are we looking at for the next three years? You know, are we seeing a break even at that point where the college will see at that, at that moment, within those three years, you know, start to see a profit and realize a profit? And if that is the case, the second point that, that I'd love to see too, was a breakdown. Dr. D, you explained some grant opportunities that all of you and your team had worked on, that's phenomenal, right? Take advantage of as many grant opportunities as you can. But to that end, when you're building that into your budget and you're looking at projecting the next three years, are you building in a set percentage that you want to see for grant opportunities? And if so, you know, are you striving to hit five hundred thousand, a million dollars? And does it account towards you hitting a profit at some point in time in the near future? So if you can also build that into, again, a budget that you can show to us for the last at least five years and projecting out to the next three, that would be really helpful. Some of the non-academic expenses that you were talking about, so rent was one of them that you had mentioned. I'd love to hear what else is there. Again, are you spending money on marketing for, you know, the growth of the customer base, or the students, I should say? And what else is, is built in there, what you're looking at for the next three years? And then you talked about relocation costs already, that was already discussed. And then I think the last thing is to just for partnerships that I'd love to know about is, folks had mentioned the expansion of the nursing program. I don't remember how long ago this was, but we did talk at one point about a partnership potentially crossing over with Quincy College and Fox Rocks Project in the, in the spot area. And so I haven't seen anything getting built over there. I don't know where we are with that. But obviously, to me, that was something that was super exciting, and I think an incredible opportunity, which would, again, drive up our customers, drive up the students coming in, right? But I don't know where we are with that, and if that's not being factored in, again, what else are we doing to ensure that we are driving up the number of students that we have here? So I guess that's the last thing that I'd like to ask, if you can explain that piece of it. But then other than that, it's just those questions that I have, again, if, if they can be shared with us, that would be really helpful to know, because that's what we're doing essentially, right? Where, again, we're approaching this and saying, you know, do we have the financial capacity? And is it, even if we have the financial capacity, is it something that we want to do to, to, to buy this business, right? And, and we can't, I feel, I can't make that decision unless, again, I can, I can at least see these numbers presented to us. So if you can get that information to us, that'd be really helpful. And then just if you can answer the question lastly about the partnership with Fox Rock, that'd be great too.
I, Chris, you want me to do that? I, I spoke, actually, I spoke with Rob Hale a couple of weeks ago, and just in general about a lot of things. He's going to be the speaker at our commencement on May twenty-first. You all get an invitation to that. And he, he alluded that, he said, you know, when the building is done, he would like to sit and talk with the college about a presence there. And that's really it. I mean, we didn't get into detail. So I'm sure others may have detailed into that, but I do not. But as you know, he's an incredible partner, and he's willing to, to work with us, with, especially as you have stated, with our nursing program. So we look forward to that discussion when it happens, and certainly we'll share that with anyone and everyone that will listen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Liang. Chair recognizes Counselor Kane.
Did, sorry, I, I thought you said Mahoney first, so if you want to.
Did I?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll go to Mrs. Mahoney then, I'm sorry.
I'm happy not to cut the line.
You had that look. Chair recognizes Mrs. Mahoney.
Thank you, Counselor Kane, I appreciate that. Although I'm sure you have great questions too. So thank you everybody for your presentation, and, and, and thank you for extending the time, Counselor McCarthy, because I think this is an important discussion. I just wanted to start with the package that Dr. Christopher had sent over, President Christopher had sent over to us. In the, but you had a budgetary summary for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and you also gave us some actuals for the Quincy College year and reports. I would appreciate if we could have the, just like the Powers, because I realized that we stopped doing the enterprise account, I think, in twenty nineteen. So we would really, it would be very beneficial if we could see a full, a full itemized budget, just like we did in Powers and Sullivan. The rolled-up budget numbers doesn't really help us do much other than to tell us that, you know, you, you had some budgetary issues. I'd like to be able to specifically look at those budgetary line items, so if we could get that before the next meeting, I greatly appreciate that. And then looking at the itemized, the actual, on, the actual year-end, it's like it's the, the actuals. I noticed that you had a revised operating surplus or deficit based on the CARES Act income. And considering the CARES Act, and was that CARES Act, I just want to break that out. Was that CARES Act from the state? Or, because I also know that you had said that you received four hundred thousand dollars worth of CARES Act from the city. So if we could break out the CARES Act, or if you know the answer to that, that would be very helpful. Could, do you know that right now, or?
I think the, the one, the, what you're referring to is federal government. The, the CARES Act that we have with the Planning Department, that would, may, may be federal or state, that four hundred and thirty thousand you're referring to.
If we could just break that, I'd just like to know where that income came from. I believe it came in from the, I think it came in at the federal level into the state, and you had to apply to the state to be reimbursed by, by the colleges. I believe any college, whether it was a community college or a private college, could apply for those monies. But I would just be curious to know how the breakout happened, because I think I had also heard that we had four hundred thousand dollars worth of CARES Act that was coming from the planning board, maybe, from the city?
Yeah, that's CARE, yeah, the CARES money that the city gets from the state or from the federal government. We're talking the same, four hundred and thirty thousand.
They're coming from two different places. So the city gets it from, the city was getting reimbursed from the CARES Act for one part of, of CARES Act, and the, the colleges are getting reimbursed from the state for the college portion of it. So it would be helpful, we could have that broken out as well. And then I noticed that we're using the CARES Act to, to revise the operating surplus or deficit. And in twenty twenty, we're saying you have a deficit of a hundred and eleven million, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And then in twenty twenty-one, you're projecting a surplus of a hun, of eight hundred and ten thousand, is that correct?
That is correct, eight hundred thousand, I think, yeah.
Okay, but that does not take into consideration, and I realize that the, the, the administration has said that we would cover the two point four million dollars, and then the projected two million dollars for healthcare, so basically for four and a half million dollars for healthcare. So you're not including that, that's not including your bottom line, correct?
Correct.
Past, even though in the past, that was something that was in your operating budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's artificially deflated, because that is something that we would like to get back to at some point. Is that not correct, that, you know, hopefully when the college starts, you know, in the, the projections, that new enrollment, that would be something that we would kind of go back and revisit, that the college would pay for, correct?
Just ask that question just a little bit slower, and I'd be glad to answer it.
So a little bit slower, but simply is, right now, you don't pay for your healthcare, although in the past, prior to the financial difficulties that the college was having, the college has, and has for the past twenty years that I know of, or however the college has and has for the past 20 years that I know of, or however long they have been paying for their healthcare, has paid for their healthcare. And then in 2020, it no longer paid for its healthcare, does not have, does not have a um, foreseeable direction to be paying for the, paying for the healthcare. Is that correct?
That's correct. I thought I already answered that, so the answer was yes, yeah.
Okay, but then if, if for, if, because they're going, right now, you're, in your 2020 budget, you have a operating surplus of 810, that's what you're projecting with the CARES Act, yet, you know, you're not paying for your healthcare. So I guess what I'm trying to say is when you have an operating surplus, will you be paying for your healthcare? Because it's, it's artificially deflating your numbers because you're not paying for something that you used to pay for, because you're being forgiven.
Mr. Chairman, I could probably jump in on that from a policy perspective, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Counselor, I think long-term, yes. The, the discussion would be about the expansion and growth of the college to a level where uh, the surpluses and the revenue coming into the college are much greater than they are today, that yes, everything would be on the table in terms of providing revenue back to the city. The mayor made a decision last year, I followed it up again this year, to say, look, uh, the city has a responsibility at the college. Um, and there are some things we can do right now to help uh, continue the college moving in the right direction as it has under both President Piladi and President Giacchistofaro. And those employee benefit costs are, are a key piece to that. Philosophy about getting the city back involved with an entity that it's already responsible for. And I think we've, we've talked a little bit about this, that look.
Yes, okay, that's, Ms. McCarthy, I appreciate that. I'm asking the question that should we get back into the enrollment phase that we actually are? Um, it's artificially lowering the, lowering their, um, their operating budget because they're not including that. So it's, it's, it's not factual in that sense. And there should be a line item that basically says what they were doing and what they'll be doing. So the city of Quincy is now, the taxpayers are picking that up and I'm just pointing that out. Um, and I, I appreciate your answer, but I think I'm going to move on because I know there's, you know, Counselor Kane still has some questions he wants to ask as well. Um, Counselor, I mean, President Giacchistofaro is also looking at the enrollment for faculty, um, the enrollment for students is, um, in 2016, you said the enrollment was 7,597 and in 2020, you're saying it's, um, and this is the enrollment, it says 5,807. And I think there was another, another slide that you had, another piece that you had provided to us. And I think the number is the same though. Um, and in this one, you call it um, number of students served. So one, one says enrollment and one says served and both say 5,807 for 2020. Could you tell me, is that um, is that a total head count that's going to the college or?
I think it can be defined just saying that it's a number of students served, whether it's, um, I don't even think the non-credit are in there. It's just the number of students served, whether you take one course, three courses or whatever. So that's the total uh enrollment in a sense, yeah.
So does that also include dual enrollment for the high schools?
Uh, it should include dual enrollment, correct.
It does, okay. So, so what I'm going to ask you then for is the de-duped, um, or the, the, I, I don't want, what we really want to know is, or maybe you could tell me because you're running the college now. What's the total number of accredited hours that we're offering at the college?
Accredited hours. I, I, you, you need to just define that for me and it would be very, very helpful.
So basically, it's a graduate from a community college, it's 15 credits and you have to be able to get those 15 credits. So it's number, and there's so many courses that are being supplied and there's a schedule of courses. So it's total number of hours, you divide the total number of hours by 15 to get your full-time, full-time equivalency.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, I'd have to.
Full-time equivalency is what I'm looking for for Quincy College. Um, and, and what I mean by that is if you, if you're enrolled full-time and you take a class, you take full-time courses in the fall and the spring, and then you take a class in the summer, um, you're considered, you're considered three times as opposed to, you're considered two times at least. What I, what I'm, because so your number of, of total is um, is, is hard for us to be able to tell to that operating budget. So when you're looking at that, I'm just trying to figure out the full-time equivalency and that would be really helpful if I could get that.
Yeah, I can get that for you, absolutely.
I'm sure you can, thank you very much. And then um, so the other question I had is, um, for the number of people that we have employed through Quincy College, um, how many, what's the total number of, of um, of, I want to break out of the pensions. So for the total number of people who are employed through Quincy College, how many of the people who are employed would go through the Quincy Teachers Association as for their pension as opposed to the city of Quincy? I need that breakout as well.
Gotcha.
Okay. Are you included, just out of curiosity, just as a president, is the president included in the Quincy Teachers or is it included in the Quincy, Quincy City Pension? I'm just curious. Because before you were part of the Quincy Teachers and now you're president of the college, I'm not sure.
Quincy Teachers.
So you'd be, so Quincy, as a president, you go through the.
Stay the same, yeah.
Okay, so if we could find that out and just break that out and let us know how many are going through um, the teachers and, and how many go through the city, that would be extremely helpful. And then um, moving down the list, um, one of the things that I had a curiosity with is the pensions, um, so typically it used to be that the pensions were reimbursed. They, they used to be, they, they used to be reimbursed the city portion. And now I believe the retirement office started billing Quincy College directly and is responsible for paying the direct cost for the retirements, is that correct?
I believe it is, correct.
And then when I was going through, I was having some numbers pulled from Munis. It looks like the numbers from 2017 through 2020 are all accurate. The numbers that were provided from you to me in your presentation, the numbers that I was able to retract from the Munis, Munis was accurate, with the exception of 2021 hasn't been paid yet. Um, and it looks like we're paying our, our, the Quincy colleges paying their pension contributions, you know, about a year late. So I'm just questioning what, why, why that would be. Because typically the bills are, come out in the beginning of the fiscal year in July. And maybe Mr. Mason can help me with this. I think, I think the city of Quincy pays their pension obligations within the first 60 days of that bill. And then I think the retirement board also bills Quincy College and like fiscal 2020, I believe paid, um, I believe that was paid um, relatively within the last couple of months, within, it was in fiscal 2021. So I'm just curious, because that's actually showing a delay in payment and that delay in payment is artificially changing the numbers that you look at something. But it's, it's, it's about a year in delay, so I'd like to just check on that as well.
Sure.
And then as far as the health contributions, you know, you gave me your health contribution breakouts for 2017 through 2019. And when I was looking at that, and I did it through Munis as well, there seems to be, um, Quincy College paid in total from 2017 to 2019, six million, six point seven million dollars. And the city actually, um, actually received 6.3 million dollars. There's a description, discrepancy of 353,000 dollars. So I'm just trying to tie that number out too. So if you could figure that out, I'd be, that would be great. I don't know if it maybe might be dental insurance or life insurance, I'm not sure. But there is, um, the city of Quincy is short 353,000 dollars for that. And then the last, the last issue that I had, and it's not an issue, but really it's just a question about from municipal finance sides, um, checking balances going back and forth. Um, Seville Hall, I, I believe, um, I believe that um, Seville Hall was, um, the city of Quincy didn't acquire it. I believe that was, um, it was through the fact that there was a, um, somebody didn't pay their taxes. I think it was an exchange of land and the city of Quincy became, became owners of Seville, the Seville property. And that's, and that became part of Quincy College. But per the Acts of Chapter 332 in the Acts of 2006 pertaining to Seville Hall, the college is responsible to pay 100,000 dollars per year with a 3% increase each year. Um, and when I went back and looked at it, it looks like it had been paid all the way through the year 2017. And then in 2017, we stopped, there, there was no more payments after 2017. And in fact, the amount that was supposed to be paid in 2017 was around 134,000 dollars. And fiscal 17, it was a 67,000 dollar payment to the city of Quincy. And since then, there has not been. So I'm actually asking, you know, to, why did Quincy College stop paying that? I'm not sure if maybe Mr. Walker knows the answer to that or Mr. Mason knows the answer to that. But that is a revenue again, that's not coming into the city of Quincy, was coming from the college and no longer is coming in. I'm not sure if, if, if President Giacchistofaro, if you know that answer either. I realize that you just, you weren't there in 2017, but just, you know.
No, Mrs. Mahoney, we can get, you know, all these questions because a lot has to do with numbers and I can work with Mr. Mason, Mr. Walker and Mr. Hines uh on, on all those questions and, and answers for you.
Yeah, and then also if I could find out, or just do a search on municipalities. I know that in March 2021, um, there was, uh, there was, I believe there was some flooring and cabinetry work that was done on Seville Hall. Um, and um, I think it was around, I want to say it's around 7 to 10,000 dollars. It was um, done by the city of Quincy for Seville Hall. So if we could go back and just take a look at that, because these are important questions that are being asked. Because, you know, as we say, um, you know, in the past, in 2013, there was a, it was an ask that the city of Quincy, um, that the college become more autonomous so they could actually go after some of their accreditations. And at that time, you know, Quincy College was doing fantastic and it was zero impact to the, to the city of Quincy. We're right now in a situation where it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but a lot of community colleges, a lot of colleges are having similar problems. And um, we're being asked to, to not only purchase land for 23 million dollars, but then actually build a building for 100 million dollars. And I'm concerned about those things. The last question that I had is for enrollment. When we're talking about Mr. Dr. Christopher, or President, I keep forgetting to claim President, I apologize. But, but um, President Giacchistofaro slash doctor, um, first time first enrolled. Do you know what the percentage of first time first enrolled is at Quincy College?
I do not right now, no.
So that would be another indicator because as we talked about, one of your, one of your sources for being um, um, a, a hope for the future of Quincy Colleges, um, North Quincy High, Quincy High School, feeder schools into Quincy College. Um, that's a direct indicator of many times people are not first time first enrolled in, in community colleges sometimes a little bit later. Then also, what is the plan for Quincy College for the 2025 educational cliff?
What, what is the plan for Quincy College in 2025?
Nope, it's a 2025 educational cliff for the enrollment of, it's basically, it's a big problem for colleges. And I'm just wondering, as we're talking about expanding our college footprint by 30%, and we're talking about all these different avenues to increase our enrollment, this is a challenge that not, this is not unique to Quincy College. This is a challenge for all colleges, private, state, all colleges. So the educational cliff for 2025.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I know what the research says in regard to the drop in enrollment, I know the demographic. And I just think that it's something we need to work with. If we talk about when President Liang talks about a three-year or a five-year, I mean, I think to get to a three-year would be very, very beneficial for this college, uh, to see where we go from there. And I think the 30% and the space, I think we can talk about that certainly if, if they could, you know, if the um, discussion goes uh further. That's pretty simple in a sense, a lot of good stuff can happen. What we have now may not look exactly like it will over there at the new, at the new building. So what we plan for that all the time. This is what, what you know, um, Ms. Mahoney, that, that obviously this is a business. And that's why we're asking these questions. How do we stay solvent? How do we look at this point and where do we go from here? It's just not as simple as saying in 2025, this would be the enrollment cliff. This is what we will do. We're doing things that we constantly adapt constantly. And that's really what I prefer in a sense of how we deal with our budget, how we deal with our Board of Governors, and how we deal with the Quincy City Council, uh, certainly as well. So we're working hard at it and I think as we go, we'll project the enrollment and that's what the president is asking for as well. What is the projection down the road? Not simple, um, but nothing is simple and the work you do certainly isn't simple as well. But we, we have our eye on the prize and we have our eye on the future uh for Quincy College.
Can I go back? Thank you very much, um, President. I, I know you do and I, 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 I know that Quincy College and I know a lot of people have gone to Quincy College who have benefited from Quincy College or have gone to a community college and have benefited from a community, community college. And um, by no means, this is, this is something that the taxpayers of the city of Quincy are being asked to, to really step up to. When this may be more appropriately solved, if the Quincy College Board was to go to the state maybe and, and, and asked to be part of the community college plan. Because it's, it's, the taxpayers are being asked to, to fund a college. And that's, and that's something that we're truly not, there's, there's not another, as you said, we're the only municipal college. That's a concern of mine. Um, but I think there is a way to get there. I just don't know necessarily what we're talking about as the correct way. Um, but one of the questions I do have, if we could go back, just, there's, there's two more questions I have. Dual enrollment, I, I just want to touch upon that. Is, do any of our high school students, when they're taking dual enrollment, do they ever step foot in a, in Quincy College? The footprint of Quincy College, as we call it, because we're counting them as a head count. And I know you're counting them as a piece of your equation for your operating budget. But when we're talking about purchasing a building, what I'd like to know is dual enrollment. Um, how does that work? I believe it's, the syllabi is approved by the college and the state for the students to be able to take it inside Quincy Public Schools. Is that correct?
It's really, it's the college faculty working with the high school teachers to take a look at a syllabus and make sure it has the rigor of a college and the complementary skills of the Quincy Public Schools as well. So that, that marriage happens. And then after that, the dual enrollment takes place in certain courses and it's, it's really advanced and honors students. Now, as far as those students coming to Quincy College, there may be far less than those students coming here versus pathways. So certainly during uh, looking at early college, high school uh in the future. So uh, I don't know the number, but I would say that many of those dual enrollment, uh, students go to a ton of other colleges, not necessarily Quincy College. What we're trying to do with that, uh, Counselor, is to take a look at all of these programs that we are looking at, the high schools here at Quincy and North, of course, but looking at other high schools and really making sure that if you're going to take dual enrollment by way of Quincy College, that you come to Quincy College right after that. I mean, I think that's a philosophy change. It may not be, uh, it may not be the right thing in a sense, but it's certainly the right thing for this college. So when the city council is asking me about enrollment and how to do that, I think dual enrollment plays an incredible part in that as well as the pathways, as well as early college, high school. All of those need to be focused on Quincy College and the pathways need to lead here.
I agree, I agree with that.
I was different, I thought about it differently when I was over there, by the way, as superintendent, you know? But this is a business and we need to, to make some change. And that is a, I think, an incredible change that will help the enrollment here at Quincy College.
I, I agree that the dual, dual enrollment is actually a great thing for a partnership in any community and the same thing with early. However, I don't know necessarily if I agree that they should count as your head count because they're actually being taught by Quincy Public School teachers, syllabes. It's a, it's a collaboration and you are getting a small fee for them, but they're not really going to be carrying the college until they become. So I think you can separate it out potentially, but not actually keep them as part of your head count. And you'll be doing that by giving me the full-time equivalency. Um, the last question I had was in regards to Plymouth. Um, so the Plymouth campus, how big is the Plymouth campus? And um, are we going to continue to have the Plymouth campus?
Yeah, we will continue to have the Plymouth campus. And again, looking at it from a business perspective, we need that, that get community to, uh, we need to do more marketing there, which we've tried to do, we've done. It's about 350 students. It's gone down probably about uh, 40 or 50 students in the last year. I've met with the superintendent in Plymouth, the new superintendent, Chris Campbell, his assistant. And we're really working with them in order to begin what we have here at North Quincy and Quincy High School, not necessarily early college, but look at pathways, look at dual enrollment that's going to feed directly to the Plymouth College campus. So uh, we're working hard in, in Plymouth and uh, this will, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, 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 I didn't mean to interrupt you, so you can continue.
It's okay, no, no, that's fine, go ahead, Counselor.
I was just going to ask what the square footage was and how much, so I was going to ask two things. What the square footage is that we have in Plymouth and what is the cost of the space that we're paying for, for Plymouth? Because as we talk about building, a building and a campus for Quincy, Plymouth does not have its own building and that is underneath Quincy College. And then I'd also like to break out of how many, um, when we go back to the employment, how many people we're employing that actually just work out of the Plymouth campus as well.
And I'll, I'll make sure we get all that information, Mrs. Mahoney, because I'm pretty sure that Dr. D has it on the tip of his tongue, but.
Oh, no, I'm not.
He doesn't want to show off.
Oh, exactly, right.
No means, Counselor McCarthy, do I think that the president has these on the tip of his tongue. I would never think that, but um, as, as we, as we discussed, this is going to, we're going to have more than one meeting, that's great. So when.
So I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Counselor Kane.
My final question, last question.
You said you had, that was your final.
I'm so sorry.
Your final was about a half an hour ago.
Oh, that's so sweet, Counselor.
Go right ahead. This is it though, and then we're going to go to Counselor Kane.
Let me just go to the last question, Counselor McCarthy, and it was with President's place. If I could also get the breakout, uh, you said that the, the rent has gone up. And I'd like to know how much the rent has gone up over the last 10 years and what the projection is over the next three years. Because that's a key indicator as well. I believe there was a stabilized rent and the only breakout that we had was going up. I think that ended in 2022. So I'd like that breakout and brought to the city council because it's being inferred that the rent is going up every single year and it's causing a deficit to the college. So I'd like that broken up for the city council. So thanks so much, Counselor McCarthy, you're so helpful.
Actually, it sounds like, actually, it sounds like former school committee meetings, actually, you know.
It does.
That's, yeah.
I'm, I'm just hoping Counselor Kane's still there. Oh, yes, he is.
Yeah, I think my, my dog's gonna start barking soon, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. Um, thank you, Dr. De Cristofaro. Thanks, Joshe. Thanks, Paul Hines, for the presentation tonight. Um, this is a very complicated, uh, subject. You know, because it's like, this is a real estate deal that's uh, sort of, there's a veneer of the necessity for the physical structure and expansion for Quincy College. And then it's also a replacement for City Hall. So I think some of these things are kind of being buried in, in the larger aspects, which is really asking for a significant amount of money, uh, from the residents of the city. Um, you know, Dr. De Cristofaro and I, and the mayor and I separately have had very frank discussions on this. And, you know, this is a, a subject that, uh, you know, I'm struggling with personally. I'm not seeing, uh, I'm not seeing this as, as appropriate and timely. Um, you know, I think historically, if we're looking at Quincy Colleges' performance and trying to understand connecting to what Counselor Liang alluded to, which is what, you know, what's the, what's our, our forecast for the future look like? You know, I think there's a lot of concepts that are being proposed, but I'm just not sure that the strategy is yet in place. Um, and I think separately in terms of economic value, if, if Quincy right now is as hot as, you know, we believe it is in the real estate market, then, you know, why are we taking a private property off the tax roll? And, you know, as Joe Shea alluded to, uh, you know, there's limited amount of real estate in the downtown. And so, you know, we want to make this a public building. Um, you know, which takes taxes that are currently being paid off the roll. Uh, and it also, uh, limits opportunities for others to add investment dollars into the city. Um, so there's, there's a couple of things that I heard and I, and I want to ask some questions, uh, and then I probably have a, you know, short statement. So uh, Dr. De Cristofaro, uh, does the, you know, typically when colleges and universities want to expand their physical plant, um, they're designed around capital campaigns. Uh, and so is there, is there currently a development function at Quincy College?
Development function in regard to finances and the future endowment?
To capital fundraising for the school.
We have not known. No.
Okay. Um, and, you know, I, I think that if, you know, we were trying to support something that was a little more designed and strategically friendly and hey, we want to grow the physical plant of Quincy College, then we probably could have looked at designing a capital fundraising campaign around that to support it, right? Um, you know, there are, uh, there's, there's industry, there's individuals, it's sort of providing that deep value proposition for the future growth of Quincy College and saying, you, you should invest in this, right? Um, two things we really didn't touch on tonight. I, I'm, and I'm shocked. I mean, it's like we didn't just live through and are still at the tail end of a pandemic and that hasn't even come up tonight. And so, you know, even before the pandemic happened, uh, education delivery was changing. Uh, you know, you now have, uh, online learning models which are readily accessible and available to anyone. Uh, you can get education through a YouTube video for free. You can use Udacity, you can use Coursera. Harvard and MIT offer their courses for free online. Um, the barriers to entry for high paying jobs, which should be the outcomes that we're measuring at Quincy College, um, are, are, are much less, are, are less high, I guess. Um, now that you can sort of access a certification program, uh, you know, for, I don't know, a technology company. There's, there's, there's different pathways now and college and universities are just, you know, it's just not the same market. Um, so when we've got here a physical enrollment, uh, that's consecutively down over the past few years, about uh, total of, uh, 13%, and we've got online enrollment, uh, increasing at 12%. You know, how, you know, why are we building a physical structure when it's trending in the opposite way? And out of the 37 associate degree programs and 27 certificate programs, we have two online programs. And so, you know, the, the question in here is of the 37 associate degree programs and 27 certificate programs, what are the top performers? What's, what's doing well? What isn't doing well? Is there an opportunity to, uh, create a strategic vision for Quincy College that, uh, plays to its strengths, right? And is creating those pathways directly to jobs? So we know, just the, the one question is, you know, what are the performers? What's our, what are our top performers at the school right now?
I think our top performers are business, uh, business finance. Uh, we're talking, what else? Uh, criminal justice uh, is, is up there. Uh, early education is up there, human services up there. Uh, we talked about that just briefly and, you know, the focus on industry is far, far more important. Our bio, our biotech program, uh, is right now, it's, it's enrolled, it's doing, doing fine, but we need to go further with that. You know, so those, those three, I think, or those three or four are really our, our top uh, right now, off the top of my head, because I don't have that in front of me. Um, but those, those are the top at, at this point.
And so then if across the board, all community colleges are trending downwards with, uh, enrollment.
Yep.
Uh, why do you think that is?
Well, first of all, let me just go back. Information technology is also one that I think is highly enrolled, uh, for, for, with our students. All right. Um, why do I think, did the, the slide that I had up there in regard to all of the community colleges? You know, if you really looked at that, you know, had some time to look at it. And I know you're bright enough to take a quick look and come up with it, but many of the colleges have, are in the same ballpark as we are, that they're suffering through. You know, and as, as Counselor Mahoney mentioned, you know, there is a cliff and there is this demographic uh, for everyone nationally as well as Massachusetts. So that's what we have to deal with and we have to do more of the marketing. We have to do more of the programming. And when I talk about the president's council, when I talk about meeting with business leaders to say, okay, look at, this is what we offer is the 37, you know, this is what we offer. What do you think? Here are the numbers. Here's the success rate. Here's the salaries that these students make as soon as they leave. What's the employment level? What's the employment rate? All of those things come with that vision that you're talking about. That if we're doing things that are not connected, if we do things, are we doing things that aren't as going to be as successful? You know, we need to take a look at the industry needs. We need to take a look at the data and provide the programming for our students. And that may differ over time. And, and that's what, what we're doing. So we go to President Liang's question about looking to the future, looking to the enrollment. We also need to look at our programs and the needs here in Quincy, here in the South Shore and nationally as well. So a lot of us, or a lot of community colleges, um, and municipal college, they're in the same boat. They're, they're, right now, they're not really progressing. Uh, they're not looking at enrollment or they're not getting the enrollment that they once had. So we're in the same ballpark, but it's not, doesn't mean that that's what you do. Doesn't mean you're satisfied with that. You just keep working it and working it. And that's why we will come up with, you know, a three year plan to take a look or five, whatever the president needs to see what we're going. But this is a very, very difficult time for, for colleges. We're not Harvard, as you mentioned Harvard. You know, to give free courses. We're not Harvard. But what we are is an incredibly driven mission, mission appropriate for this college and this city and South Shore. And that's, that's who we are. So um, I think we have a ways to go. I think, I think, uh, the program needs, I think that you're mentioning, critical. Our partnership with
I agree with you, Dr. De Cristofaro. I, I, we have, we have a long way to go. And I think Quincy College is an absolute gem, but I just don't think it currently warrants a physical structure, given the data that you've presented, the information that we've been presented. And that's, those are factors that were out of your control coming into this situation. There have been, you're the fifth president in three years to be at this school, right? And so now we've got, uh, a person in yourself who we believe in, he's a known quantity, he's done great work through the school system. It's just a different value proposition at the end of the day, right? Um, so it's not, the question isn't, if, if we don't make, if we say no to this building, it's Quincy College doesn't, it's not Quincy College's demise. It's how do we reposition Quincy College for its success, right? And that, and that to me would include, uh, finding resources that are not necessarily, uh, bonded numbers to buy valuable real estate in the downtown. Uh, you know, on, on speculation. This is all currently speculation also. Um, what else here? Um, and then, and then, you know, the financial factors are important. So, you know, we're being asked for 23 million plus 100 million versus, uh, replacement costs of a structure, 20 million plus your continued rent, which is on your books, should be figured out as the enterprise that you, as you independently exist. Um, in terms of the grand scheme of things right now, the city council is being asked to look at, um, close to three quarters of a billion dollars worth of spending. Uh, it's seven, almost seven, about 750 million dollars, which is an ex, you know, that's an extreme amount of money. Um, 175 million just tonight alone. And uh, the difference between some of the things that are on the financial, uh, the calendar for the finance committee tonight are that people, people want the infrastructure improvements. I'm not hearing people ask me for a physical structure for Quincy College. And that's a decision that I need to make based on uh, feedback from my constituents, but I, I am pretty, pretty confident in my understanding of what people ask for on a regular basis. And it's, it's, it's money for schools. It's money for streets and sidewalks, right? And so again, that is how can we be put in a better position to support Quincy College and its success without having to risk such a high financial, uh, burden for the city, right? Um, because there's a lot of asks, you know, there's 450 million alone coming from a, you know, the, the restructuring of the, of the pension liabilities. So, you know, I, you know, we, we spoke and I, you know, alluded to it again. I, I want to do everything. I want to personally help the college. I, I think that, you know, there's, there's, uh, there's an opportunity to, to create a competitive market advantage when you're watching the rest of these schools, uh, you know, go, go down the tanks too, you know? Um, I, I think that this is, this story isn't so much about connecting, uh, the, the students of the city, which is, it's a nice thing to connect the students of the city to the college, but what's going to make people come to the college from outside, right? And where are the growth industries right now that we can be training people for? Where are the growth industries, right? You know, nursing 40, 41 people, that's, that's small numbers, but we could be training, uh, you know, the, the tech talent of the future. We've got, you know, the state who are promoting five different pillars around, uh, robotics, financial technologies, machine learning, you know, there is, there is a glut, there is a glut of talent that needs to be populated. And if we're not creating the curriculum around those verticals to support state and to support the future growth and, and labor pool for the companies that need the people, then I don't, I don't know if we have a proposition. So um, it's, it's nothing more than, you know, uh, that I said, you know, stated to you privately, Dr. De Cristofaro and with, you know, others. And I, I appreciate, uh, the, the desire to, uh, to have this physical structure, but it's, it's mired in complication too. And so it makes it very difficult to say, yes, this makes sense when I, I just truly don't think it makes sense at present. So, um, you know, I, I know that we've got a few weeks apparently for, I, I, you know, I, I'm not sure what more information can be presented or what's going to be redesigned in that time period. But, um, you know, and I, I will, can, I, I'm, you know, we'll talk again because I'm, I'm, I'm serious. I, I see the value in this school. I'm just, I just am not seeing it currently tied to this, this real estate project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counsel, uh, Chair recognizes Counselor failing.
Okay.
You're muted, Chuck.
I think I clicked it twice. Okay. Am I on? Can you hear me?
You're on, you're on.
All right. Um, couple of comments. One thing just for filling in for a piece of information. So when you're looking for the stuff on Civil Ave, I was on the city council when we voted in President's place. It was part of the PUD agreement. And the building was built under that PUD agreement. So I don't remember all the details to it. But there is, uh, that, that is, that was part of the original President's place. When that was built, that was a PUD agreement from the city council. So just a piece of information to fill in. Um, to look at. I guess my que, my next question would be, I'm not going to go with some of the same questions that people have, but my next question would be to, uh, to Dr. De Cristofaro, question is, in the, in the current packages being put forth by the, by the, by President Biden, and they're looking at, already has passed actually the, the House. They're looking at, uh, funding free community colleges for, uh, for, for people as a, as a way to stimulate the economy and everything. I guess when we come to Quincy College, we know it's unique status. Would Quincy College be in line for that type of funding?
I haven't heard anything about that, Counselor. I know that we're in line for the higher ed, um, relief funding. I know we're in line for that, but, but not necessarily the, the free, uh, college, community college funding. I'm not really sure about that at all.
Okay. I ju, I just think that that would have a, play a big role if all of a sudden all the community colleges are given a free college. Obviously, nothing's free. Um, that somebody pays the bill somewhere. And, um, just that, uh, we're going forward with the, if we go forward with the college, that could be, uh, be something that could, could, uh, impact the financial future of Quincy College going, going, uh, in the future. I know it's a, it's currently before the Congress, I believe it was passed by the House. But it's now going to the center where it's kind of, it's kind of rocky up there. But it is a plan that is being pushed by the president right now. And how that works, because I think with colleges, it's up to the states. So there, there's a lot of ifs and buts about it. And I would like to see that the, the city or the, that we work on getting that, if there's money like that coming, we should be, we should be aligned for it, I would think. Um, another thing, when I used to be on the city council, actually the school committee oversaw Quincy College. Which back, I know you were on the, you were in the administration at that time. And that was, uh, but one of the things I noticed since I came back, something I would like to see different from the college is when we hear about crises at the college, we generally hear about them in the newspaper. We're usually the last ones to hear about them. Um, we used to get the, the college budget would be presented to us. We used to get the financials, all the information on Quincy College. And I know in 2013, there was this separate thing, but what seems to be happening is this, it's still a city department. Still a city department. It's still a city, you know, the city employees. And sometimes we're on the end and we're being, with head of instincts thrown at us saying, you gotta support this if you want to support the college. And, you know, I do support the college. I have supported it over the years. But also thank the Councils of Christopher. I got an invitation, first time in a while for Quincy College graduation, which was something that the city council used to always participate in. And I think in the years, is try to be that separation. But I also think where the city's gonna be taking all the healthcare costs, taking all our other things. We now have to almost look at Quincy College as a city department. And there has to be more oversight from the city council on it. So a lot of the questions I'm hearing from my colleagues, I think are very appropriate. And I think it's stuff that we should be a part of. I, I know you, in your presentation, said you would like to come before the city council maybe a couple of times a year to explain. And I think that would be a great, great idea because I think there is good things happening there. We all want to support the college, but we also have to look at what the taxpayers are gonna pay. And that's something that's, um, that we have to take into consideration.
If, if I could, Counselor, I just, you know, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think the communication between the college uh, and the city council is, is critical. A lot of the questions that are asked, uh, this evening would not have necessarily had to have been asked because we would have talked, um, at least, I would say at least, you know, the three, whether it's the fall, the spring, uh, fall, the winter, uh, and the spring. Maybe that's the kind of, of communication you need. Plus any of the newsletters that we do to can just kind of include the city council, certainly more than it has in, in, uh, probably the last five or six or seven years. So that's why a lot of this is present, other than the fact that it is, um, significant, the whole discussion that we're having. And I get it. But you're right, Counselor. So we'll, uh, that's the easiest thing I think, um, I can do.
Yeah, I think that would be some, if anything comes out of that, I think this would be, that would be something very good because you have a great story that's dealt. It's something that a lot of people have utilized in the city. Um, I took a course there. I know my son took several courses there. My daughter did. Uh, we've all gone, everyone has utilized it. And it is a unique thing for the city, but I think we also have to weigh what the cost benefits are and what, uh, what it's going to be on the, on the taxpayer. So that's something we have to, we have to work on. And those are some of the issues. One of the things, uh, my next question would be, I think this would be to Eric. And I, I realize you don't have it at this point. I know I sat down with Eric and we went over it. But something I would like to have for the next meeting is what we currently have out for bonds, what we're expecting to come off of those bonds, like, uh, you, uh, I'm looking at passing a lot of money on bonds, not just Quincy College, but some of the other issues you said here. And I would like to see what our, what our bonded indebtedness, you know, carry it out over the next 20 years to see. I know, I know you do charts like that, but I think it's very important that we see when are things coming off, when are things going on? And see what, what the pitch And see what, what the picture is going to look like. If you could, uh, get that information for us for the next meeting. I know you've already started some of it, you were showing me the other, when, when we met on, uh, some of the issues financially. And it would be really helpful to have that before we make a decision on this. And I guess my ne, my next question would be to, uh, I think this would be for Chris Walker. In a, in a lot of the papers, we're seeing a lot about money coming back from, uh, from, with the different COVID things and stimulus and all this. And a question is, in this building, we're right now looking to bond. Have we looked at having any funding to use the funding to pay for like the building? And, uh, use the funding? Because I know maybe not City Hall, but it, would there be funding available for, for a new college?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there very well could be, Counselor. Uh, we've had a number of discussions with Congressman Lynch's office, um, Senator Markey's office and Senator Warren's office relative to some things coming down the pipeline, uh, in terms of infrastructure, uh, other opportunities. Um, there's existing funding sources, um, that was mentioned earlier relative to additional stimulus for Quincy, for community colleges that could be a source. Um, there is expected to be an education component to the infrastructure bill that, uh, eventually will make its way through Congress. Uh, there's also, uh, a housing reform bill that's going through Congress right now that does include money for educational facilities as well. So, um, you know, we have some folks on top of that, Counselor, that are, uh, reading these bills and, and highlighting and circling every possible avenue that we're going to have, um, particularly when it comes to dealing with Congressman Lynch's office. Um, you know, he's well aware of, of the city's priorities, um, and the discussions he's had directly with the mayor of the college building has been at the forefront of those discussions.
I think that, I think that would be important for us, not to just look to throw it on the city taxpayers and the bond issue. But also to look if we can find funding. For example, like we did with the Adams Hancock Green, we were able to find significant funds to help to fray the cost of that. And I think, um, where we are looking at several hundreds of millions of dollars here, that it behooves us to find any funding source that we can get before we go, actually go out and do the bonds. I mean, I know tonight what we're looking at is just purchasing the property and stuff like that. But I think, uh, like we did in other projects, cross down connector, several of those, that would behoove us to look to, uh, get money to offset.
I, I agree, Counselor, and, and that's in the works. I would, I, the caveat to that, and, and you mentioned it, is, uh, we're dead in the water without land control. Um, acquisition has to come first. We cannot go through the federal or state government, uh, in all likelihood and say, you know, please grant us a, a portion of our construction cost for this new building and turn around, we don't have site control. Uh, that's why, uh, we do processes like this in this way, uh, is because we know when we enter a project of this magnitude, uh, site control and the ability to have a project, uh, is always the top or one of the top boxes you need to check when it comes to state, federal and, and other sources of money.
Yeah. Um, you know, I'm glad we're going to have other meetings, there's a lot, uh, but I just thought going to be repetitive to what other counselors have already said. But I would like to, the one thing is that from Eric on the bonds, that we know where we are on bonds and how much is on, how much is going on, how much is coming off? Just hit the police station for a hundred and twenty million dollars. So I'd like to see those numbers by the next meeting. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Andrew Broniko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, uh, to, to my colleagues. Uh, I just want to say thank you to, uh, Dr. Christopher and the team, uh, for joining us here tonight. I know, uh, you know, we've had some pretty in-depth conversations. You've offered to meet with counselors one-on-one as well, uh, to go even further in depth. But yeah, a little before the meeting, I, I had actually gone back and I, I took a minute to watch the, uh, the video that was on Facebook and YouTube that, uh, the mayor and the administration put out on March 23rd, just to go back and look at some of the statements that were made there. And I just kind of wanted to follow up with those to, to verify, uh, that information. And, you know, some of the info that came out tonight, um, I believe was from Mr. Hines, uh, through President Liang's question about the cost of the actual structure itself, when we get to that point, if we get to that point, is going to be, uh, over a hundred million dollars. So effectively, we'd be looking at, uh, a minimum of a hundred and twenty-three million dollars, uh, for the land acquisitions and for the ultimate construction, uh, of the building. And with the statement in the video was just very simply that Quincy College will pay off that bond entirely through rent. And I just was hoping, uh, President Christopher, if you could clarify that that is, is true.
I'm not really sure, uh, Counselor, uh, at all. I mean, I'd leave that up to, to Mr. Walker to talk about because I'm not really involved.
Yeah, through you, um, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I apologize, Dr. D. My sense on that, Counselor, is that the rationale is that whatever the college is building, the college will pay for, that we'll be able to develop a program to which if the college is X amount of this construction, that the percentage of the debt service will equate that percentage. Uh, we, uh, don't believe obviously that if the city office portion of this project becomes part of that, that the good folks at Quincy College are going to pick up the tab for, uh, city office space. That's not really part of the discussion. Um, what is part of the discussion is the college paying rents, uh, for its share of the building, which will be a substantial, um, substantial piece of that share.
And just to clarify, clarify then, it would be, uh, effectively proportional to the use of space within the building.
That's the going, that's the going rationale right now. Obviously, there's some nuts and bolts that would need to be worked out in terms of the exact, uh, monetary rental relationship between the college and the city. And, you know, I, I alluded to it a little bit earlier, Counselor, about, you know, building in potentially some, some growth mechanisms, uh, that would provide additional revenue back to the city at some point, you know, should the expansion of the college, uh, and everything goes the right way, that, that, you know, there, there, there could very well be and should be a discussion relative to what, uh, the college contributes back to the city.
Thank you for that. And, uh, I know it was alluded to earlier as well through many of my colleagues about this is more of a, a business-esque, uh, decision. And we're looking at return on investment, and that's why we're asking some of the questions that we are. And obviously, uh, I believe it was Counselor Kane that pointed this out. You know, we're talking about different bonds, you know, taxpayers want to know, what am I getting, uh, as a direct benefit, uh, as a consequence of, of funding? You know, funding these bonds and actually paying them off. You know, when we're talking about the public safety complex or, uh, you know, an infrastructure plan, it's very clear cut. Uh, but in the Quincy College aspect, it's a little bit different. And another one of the things that was mentioned, uh, in the mayor's video was that the college provides about forty-nine and a half million dollars, uh, to the regional economy. Uh, but in the video, I wasn't certain if, you know, in the essence of Quincy College, we meant Quincy, if we meant the South Shore, if we meant Plymouth. Um, because as was seen in the, just the, the head count, uh, at this point in time, about two-thirds of, of students are, are located within Quincy. So I just wasn't sure where the number came from, uh, forty-nine point five million, uh, contributed by Quincy College to the regional economy. And if this plan moves forward and let's say five years from now, the plan comes to fruition, Quincy College is doing well. What is the additional amount of economic activity that Quincy would be able to benefit from, uh, if it moved forward? Because that's really the return on investment that we're looking at here. It's fronting the upco, upfront costs, taking the risk, and then what do, what do we get in return is in terms of hard dollars if this is more of a business decision?
Through, through you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor will be happy to provide the full study, uh, that, um, provided those numbers, um, both that Dr. D talked about tonight and that the mayor's talked about previously. Um, and we're happy to, to put together an analysis relative to what, um, the permanent home of the college and the jobs that it would create and the economic benefit it would provide, uh, to the immediate downtown area.
Thank you. I'd, I'd sincerely appreciate that. Though, those were my questions for tonight. Uh, I'll let others speak, and I know we have, uh, more meetings in the future, so just want to say thanks for everyone's time.
Thank you, Counselor. And last but not least, Counselor Dubana.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. Um, good to hear all my counselors tonight. Um, a lot of great perspective, great questions. Um, a lot of different, um, strategy scenarios. Uh, I want to thank Dr. Christopher, President Christopher, and Paul Hines and Joe Shea for your presentation. I could tell you one thing, it's a great sales presentation, but at the end of the day, the timing of this is, is tough because there's a lot of asks of a lot of bonding going on presently, just getting over the Quincy, um, you know, public safety headquarters. Some of my questions, um, is just, you know, a little bit of a concern. When is the timeframe for this? If this was to go through and all the present meetings and when would be the timeframe of this Monroe building be built? When would the conversion be from Hancock, uh, President's Place over to the new building?
Through you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I, I can take a crack at that one. Uh, Counselor, we would be back, and Mr. Shea can elaborate on this if necessary. Uh, we would be back before the council, uh, sometime in 2022, uh, much as we were relative to the public safety headquarters, um, for the full project financing request. That would probably be, say it's about a year to get, get us to a point where we would have a project. And we have the ability to, uh, move on a project. So let's call it fall 2022 that we're back before the, the body with the full funding request. Let's say that's approved before the end of calendar 2022. You're now breaking ground, probably winter of 2023. Uh, and you start with demolition and site work. And, and this is where I would lean on, uh, Mr. Shea, if I'm ballpopping, you're, you're talking at least two, uh, potentially three years of construction for a project of this magnitude. So now you're at 2026, um, 2025, 2026, before we're in an occupied building. Joe, how'd I do?
You did very well, yes. Uh, the, with the building of this stature would be extraordinarily aggressive, which we can be in Quincy to make the twenty-five, twenty-six academic year. Uh, and in more, a more typical progression would be occupancy for the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic year at Quincy College.
Which kind of leads me into, this is a big, very important vote to be on the city council. I mean, we have Dr., you have your president, Dr. Christopher, which is an educator. Um, it felt like we're on a school committee meeting tonight. And when I'm buying into something like this, I'm also buying into the people involved. Joe Shea, I've worked with you, Paul Hines, I've worked with you. You're a great team together, but who knows what's going to be going on in 2026? Who knows who's going to be the president of the college? I don't know if Dr. Christopher, are you, are you going to be around that long? Um, you know, um, that's kind of a long time from now, to be honest with you. We were looking at a five to six year forward on, on getting this built. A lot of things can happen in that timeframe, you know? A lot of things that can happen, um, to be honest with you, are unforeseen, unforeseen situations like this COVID-19 pandemic, which hadn't been too spoken about. We don't know if other pandemics would come down the line. We don't know if we're going to have a recession in the middle of this build out. We don't know if there's other colleges that will be more competitive and take Quincy College students from that. We don't know if there's going to be more online courses as technology changes and is more cost effective for the students. So these are all unforeseen things that we don't know over this timeframe to make a commitment on this. Um, and I don't, I don't want to be, these are my concerns that I have, um, listening to a lot of my colleagues on this. It is, it, it really in the nutshell, in, in the end of the day is, um, and, and I will speak more about this in general, but, um, how does the city council gain control of all of this? How does the city council put some amendment or a clause in there and say, hey, listen? Things aren't working out. Can you build it a certain way where it's converting into, if the college doesn't succeed, that these classrooms and these spaces can be used for something for the future? Um, are you going to split the Monroe building up and make it where the city, the city employees are going to be on one side of the building and the Quincy College be on the other side of the building? Just in case this unforeseen situation happens and the college does not succeed in the future? Um, these are all things that we need to consider now before we start building a, 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 a project like this. And ha, making sure that, um, we, we kind of foresee this out. Um, I know, um, with the exception, except, except, exception of, um, Quincy College, um, and Counselor came at a lot of great points and so did Counselor Phelan on, we need to have more better oversight. At the same token, is this something that we can invest into? Um, I have every, every positive, um, you know, in, in Dr. Christopher, that he's going to do a fantastic job. It's just what about the future? Um, as Counselor Kane said, we had five college presidents over the last three years. Is the stability that we need to have for the future? Uh, Dr. D, you're the perfect person, um, to be, to be in this role right now. Um, somebody that's from the city, that's been with a lot of us over the, uh, high school. I mean, with, um, with, at, at the Quincy Public Schools, and then coming over here. You're the perfect person in place to make this, this proposition in front of the city council. Um, I don't know if you had any comments on, on some of the questions that I may have asked. That's just some of my concerns, listening to everybody tonight. I'm glad we're not voting on this, Counselor McCarthy. You did a good job with letting us digest some of these and getting some of the questions for later.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Counselor. And any of those questions that you just, or statements that you made, I'll make sure that I talk with Dr. D and, and company and get those, get everything wrapped up. There was a lot of, um, a lot of information tonight. You know, as this was going to be an introduction to Quincy College and, um, you know, uh, went a little bit longer. Just a couple.
Real quick, Counselor McCarthy, if you could, if there's any of the, um, if anybody wanted to comment, um, Dr. D, Chris Walker, Joe Shea, or anybody on any of those, any of those questions that I may have or concerns I may have had, um, some of those. I think biggest, I think the biggest thing for me is the build out of it. I think, um, I think the build out of the, of the, of the, of the, of the building is so important, just in case it doesn't work. Just in case this doesn't work, is there a conversion to say, okay, we're renting out the space to Quincy College? But if it doesn't work, we can rent this out to someone else. Is that, is that something you've considered at all, Mr. Walker?
Through, through you, Mr. Through, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's a incredibly valid point, Counselor. Um, we understand that perspective, uh, in its entirety, and it, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, I would say that it's a discussion more likely to happen at the time that we're back before you or between now and the time we're back before for the actual build out budget. As I had noted a little bit earlier, um, what we're before you with now is the, is the property acquisition. Um, we can't do anything without, we can't have the best project in the world. We can't have a project that succeeds. We can't have a project without having site control. Uh, and that's why, as we did with the public safety headquarters and probably other projects prior to this, is that we first present the site acquisition, design, and project management as the first tranche of funding, and then come back for the full project. Uh, I think at the time that we're back before the body for the full project, uh, is the time that those sorts of tough decisions are, what is the, the ramifications of potentially? I mean, look, if you're asking, we fully believe we wouldn't be before you, Counselor. The mayor certainly wouldn't. If he didn't believe with everything in his heart, that Quincy College is going to be here for a long, long time, and it's not going to be an issue. That doesn't mean it, that doesn't need to be addressed and your concerns be allowed. Um, but he has the full, he has full faith that, uh, this is not about saving the college. Uh, this is about preserving the college and expanding the college, giving it the permanency and the security, the security that it's never had, all those things that you talk about, Counselor. Those are, those have been issues with the col, college for years, even more. Those have been issues with the college for years, even more so when they don't have a place that they can call their own. They're at the whim of the market to some degree. They're at the whim of their landlord. They've been, as Dr. D described it, nomads for a long, long time. And that's, you know, for the culture part of this that Dr. D had talked about, and in building up that culture and building up the reputation, a building of its own, that it knows it's going to be there, provides a level of stability, provides a level of ability to plan for the future that they haven't had yet. They're still here, and in a lot of ways, they're still thriving. But again, I'd circle back to my original point, Counsel, that what you're talking about is entirely a valid discussion to have, and certainly a question we would absolutely have to answer for. But from a practical standpoint, it's probably a question between acquisition and building construction, not one prior to acquisition, because we can't have a discussion. We can't have the discussion about what are we going to do with this building? God forbid if Quincy College can't meet its requirements here. We can't have that discussion without having site control because we don't have a project.
Listen, I want the college to succeed. I want this Quincy College to succeed. I think it's a great thing for the city of Quincy. But essentially, these nine counselors that are voting on this tonight, oh, well, in the future, this $23 million is basically, you basically have to ask those questions now because you're essentially making the commitment to do this, do this project. I would probably think that most counselors that vote for it are probably going to vote for the building. And you wouldn't want to waste this $23 million unless you thought it would succeed. So really, essentially, the vote for the building is really the vote now. Do you think it's going to succeed? And these are all valid questions tonight, and I heard it from a lot of different perspectives of my fellow counselors. And it brought light on different angles, but at the end of the day, I want to see the college succeed. I think it's very important for the city. It's just the timing of it and foreseeing what 2026 will look like in 2027, when it's fully built and it's ready to go for the new students to make the conversion over. And what do we do in the meantime when we're still at Hancock President's Place? Or we're still Seville, or we have to do some space in a different building? And I can remember, I think it was 10 years ago, you had to use the Newport Ave location for like, I think, two years. And we've had to move. I mean, it's not unforeseen that you might have to relocate before this build-out. So these are all questions you need to kind of consider now before you even take this $23 million vote. And the new thing about this vote is it's not just the Quincy College, it's also the employees in the building that you're in right now, Chris. And I fully understand that we need, there's a lot of renovations and it's in bad condition. It's just I wish we could separate the two and vote differently, or acquisition two different buildings where there could be some type, and I hate to call this a bailout, I have a bailout program that if it doesn't work out, that the employees of the city can still be available that way. And I, listen, these are all things that are kind of like the first topic of conversation. And I'd be happy to meet with you guys down the road, and our colleagues, my colleagues can speak more about this and we can get more information about it. But these are what came to my mind right away as my colleagues were speaking tonight. But I do appreciate it, Mr. Walker. And I am on board with making this succeed, just want to make sure it does.
Thank you, Counselor. I will wrap this up. I mean, we really had a lot of good points.
Mr. McCarthy, if I know, Counselor, I'm so sorry.
Well, I want to make sure Al Grasiosso is wide awake for the next round, so go ahead, Doctor.
If I could, just real quick, I just want to thank so many faculty and advisory people here, the students that are online, leadership team people that are here being represented. And I would never look at this, and Counselor, I appreciate your comments very, very much, you know, because there are a ton of questions to be answered. One question, this college has been here for an incredibly long time, with ups and downs and full enrollment and lacking enrollment, you know, but this city has stuck with this college. You know, there is no plan for closing. You know, every regulatory agency is behind us, very supportive. You know, I just think that the tenor, you know, I understand it, and we need to prove it in so many ways, and we'll do that. But I want to make sure that, certainly, I'm a taxpayer as well, as affiliated here as the president of the college. But to say the hard work of this faculty, the professional staff, the administration, is absolutely unmatched. And we'll go with any other community college, we'll take a look at their enrollments and how they're doing or not doing. But we're in the same ballpark, and we're working harder than they ever thought. So I would just say that this college is one that has an incredible, incredible amount of pride in what they do, how they do it, because they understand that the caring, the kindness of these students will increase enrollment. A new location, a new building will increase enrollment. All of that will increase enrollment. Bottom line is, and I think some people mentioned it already, that connection to high schools may be minimized in some way. I think it's paramount. I absolutely think it's paramount because it's going to grow this enrollment. And to answer your question, I'll be here for quite some time, you know.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
President, Finance Chair, I'm so sorry I hopped in there.
No, that's okay.
Thank you, Dr. D.
No, thank you. And as I said, I'll just wrap it up. I mean, there were a lot of great points, a lot of great questions, and I think that's, I will come back probably with another meeting, not next week, but the week after, and then probably follow it up with a meeting before May 17. A lot of points, though, you know, we talk about COVID. We didn't even know there was a coronavirus, you know, and, you know, we talk about all these things, what if, and what happens? We didn't know interest rates were going to be at 2% either. You know, so there's plenty of factors out there. It is a big year of bonds. But I work for a big company that I thought would go the other way and say, we're going to work from home and, you know, not go back to all our offices. And they're telling us they've seen such a downtrend with folks that don't have a quality of life, don't have any rapport anymore. Just like the kids getting, the kids back in Quincy High and North Quincy High, get them back in the classrooms, everybody wants them back in the classrooms. I think the same thing goes for Quincy College. The kids will come back, the adults will come back, they'll come in the classroom, they'll build a rapport, and I think things will work out. But we will have a couple of more meetings. I'll get back to everybody probably tomorrow with the next meeting on this. I'll talk to Mr. Walker and Ms. Manning on scheduling. And at this point, I will adjourn, but I want to thank everyone for all their great questions and statements and a great presentation by Dr. DiChristofaro, Mr. Hines, and Mr. Shea. And we'll now adjourn the Quincy College meeting and move on to our next item agenda, which is the DPW, the various council orders in regards to road improvements in Quincy. And I'll go right to DPW Commissioner Grasiosso.
Mr. Chairman, can I move approval?
Oh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Oh, so we have a motion under approve right now for the $100 million? Do we have to?
The first one. Yeah, I think we have to do the material, so the first one on the agenda.
There's a motion to approve Council Order 2021-031. I assume, let me make sure, you surprised me, Counsel Palmucci. Yeah, so 2021-031, motion to approve, $100 million for 2021 roadway improvements. All those in favor?
Hold on, discussion order real quick, if I could.
Yep, go ahead, on the motion.
Sorry, I know the ward councils want to get the funding in there. I just want to ask the question real quick. Trust me, I know, and roads and sidewalks are the most important thing. But very similar to Dr. DiChristofaro in the last presentation, is our Commissioner Al Grasiosso. He has done a fantastic job with the last, I think it's two and a half to three years of being in this position. He's fiscally conservative. He does a fantastic job with attention to detail. He's a commissioner that gets back to you right away. Oh, Counsel DeWanna, I'll check on that tomorrow morning, and I'll get back to you. That's a great relationship to have. He's another per, now, the last bonding that we did, and if Eric Mason or anyone can answer this, we bonded how much for roads and sidewalks?
I can.
I can, I'll do.
Yeah, I can answer that question. We bonded, I believe, $17 million.
Okay. And before that, did we bond for more roads and sidewalks?
I believe there was a $5 million bond back maybe in, it may have been 2015, I'm not sure. I think $3 million was for neighborhoods and $2 million was for main roads. I wasn't here at the time, but I remember that.
Yep. So we bonded $22 million over the last six years for roads and sidewalks?
It would be at least, it may be more than six, but I'd have to check on that, Counselor.
Okay, and then, and through you, to Mr. Commissioner, we've talked privately, and I thank you for sitting down with me. And you've done a fantastic job with taking over this position. I mean, you're, I talked about attention to detail. If there's an issue with the street, you're right on top of it to tell the contractor to get out there to fix it, and you're not afraid to do that. It's almost like Dr. D in the last presentation. I'm also buying into you, Commissioner. Do you, how long do you foresee $100 million on top of the Chapter 90 funding that we're going to get? We're roughly between $1.9 and $2 million a year. How do you, how long do you think this $100 million will last? And what do you foresee of the yearly intake of what we're going to put down for roads and sidewalks?
We're looking at, this is a very aggressive plan, Counselor. We're looking for a five-to-seven-year plan to complete this Phase Two.
Okay. And these are just roads and sidewalks, this has nothing to do with water sewers? It doesn't have to do with our water mains or sewer or anything?
Yeah, correct. And we have, you know, on the agenda tonight, there are other council orders to address those. We look at everything in an asset management-based infrastructure improvement. And we do, we did have a quick presentation this evening, but, you know, we can talk about that. But yes, we look at, as we do a roadway, we look at all of our infrastructure, water, sewer, drain, and gas also.
Sure.
You know, if we spend money in a road, we want to make sure that the infrastructure is proper.
You know, and you said five-to-seven-year plan of $100 million. I just, I'm thinking to myself, hopefully you're in this position for that long. And if you aren't, that we have a working relationship with the next commissioner that is equivalent to you. I mean, you're pretty personable with, I can speak for myself as an at-large counselor on just being so transparent on the roads. I mean, all the paperwork that we get, it's so transparent on what we're accomplishing here. And if we work together on these type of things, and we have the proper oversight, which you do, we're going to satisfy the citizens of the city of Quincy, which are taxpayers. They all want roads and sidewalks, that's Counsel Palmucci would say. And I have no problem approving this, I just want to make sure that Commissioner Grasiosso, you stay as long as you can.
I appreciate the kind words, Counsel. I will say this, the plan we put in place is a plan, we have an excellent team down here at DPW, and we have excellent consultants. We have beta engineering with us this evening. Our plan is to be put in place, and no matter who's in this position, there'll be, this is a five-to-seven-year plan that, once it's in place, we will execute this plan. And it's the people in this department that make the plan work. It's not, it's not just me, I'm the head of it, but it's a team effort. And we have great people down here, and that's why the plan works so well.
I concur, I concur with your staff, with your department, every person works hard out there, and I appreciate all your hard work, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I'm going to motion to approve, I approve, yay, yes.
Okay, on the motion, do we have Mrs. Mahoney?
Yep, thank you very much, Counsel McCarthy. Now, could I just ask a couple of questions? I know you said it was seven years, and the last one, the $17 million one, that was a five-year plan, right?
It was, yes, seven, it was actually a $26 million plan. We used, we had other funding sources within that plan, but we, you know, we were aggressive, and, you know, we, if, you know, funding is approved tonight, we'll finish this Phase One portion of this plan in this year, roughly three and a half years.
And how many streets did you do with the $26 million?
We've completed, to date, 93 streets, I believe. The original plan was for 95 roadways, we've completed 93. We've added, and we completed that for roughly $23 million.
Okay.
So we committed under budget. During the plan, we added other streets due to various situations that came up, water main, water main breaks, other things we needed. So we added another 23 streets to this plan. So when that's completed, we'll have completed 118 streets in that plan. Also in that, out of those 118 streets, we'll have completed, out of those 118, 103 will have new water mains, 42 will have new sewer mains, sewer lining. In 53 streets, we replaced the gas mains. We also did another, added another 126 streets where we crack sealed.
So, 123, so was that all underneath the 26 million, or is there?
Yes, well, the $11 million we're asking for tonight, we'll complete those because of those additional streets we added.
Okay, so $11 million of the $100 million will go for those 26 streets you added, correct? And then the $89 million is for the neighborhoods?
The $89 million is broken down into 65 million for neighborhood roads, 20 million for main roadways, and two to four million for sidewalks and crack sealing maintenance.
Okay. And how many, just because you just told me how many streets, how many in that 89, you just said, maybe you just told me this, but is it, how many streets do you think in total you're going to be doing? Roughly?
This, this plan is very conservative in our funding.
Right.
I think there's roughly somewhere around 175. But if we manage this plan like we managed the first phase, we believe that we're going to be able to add additional streets into this plan.
So the first one, you did 118, and this one, the first one was 27 million, and this is 89 million, so it's double, you think you can do 175, is it what you're telling me?
Yeah, and I don't have the numbers, and maybe Mr. Costello, who's on, has, when you look at-
I know, it's not going to be apples to apples, because we're talking, he's trying to, yeah.
We look at mileage, we look at length of road, we look at width of road, so it's not always apples to apples.
I know, but we also are bonding at a lesser rate, so we're, you know, hoping that we'll get more bang for buck, which we will, because you'll be managing it out. But I just was trying to get an understanding for that, too, so maybe Mr. Costello could help me?
Yes, as the Commissioner said, it's related to the length of roads. So you just can't count the number of roads, it's the length of the road and also the width of the road.
Yeah.
We pay about $406 a square yard. And in many cases, we have the main roads a little wider, but I believe the two-thirds of the proposed cost is in the neighborhood roads. So we're doing a much longer length than we did in the first phase.
Okay, and then, and you think it's going to take five to seven years? And then, because in the first round, I think, Al, you had told me, and I apologize if I don't get this right, but in the first round, because you did it kind of expediently, that we did, we not get some of that Chapter 92 funding? Or is there funding that we didn't get because we went too fast? Is that true? What was it that we did?
Correct, we have about three years of Chapter 90 money that we had planned to use, but again, we worked so quickly that we were not able to get that money yet.
Will we get that money, or is that?
Yes, yeah, we'll be getting Chapter 90 money every year.
Okay, so isn't this plan for the seven years to kind of- Okay. So, is, in this plan for the seven-year to kind of pay it up so that we actually get the money at the same time, so that we're not, I mean, I don't, I want you to be able to get as much as you can done. I just wanna make sure we're also getting the refund.
This, this plan does not account for chapter ninety money, so that's, that's a bonus, but, you know, chapter ninety, we have to look at it. There's other, other things, you know, that, you know, we, we have a couple of bridge projects we're looking at right now, um, that we would probably have to use chapter ninety money for, but there's different things, but there will be chapter ninety money, which will enable us to do additional roadways. But again, we didn't account for those, that, we have not accounted for that money.
So that's a little concerning to me, because we're bonding, again, we're bonding, we're talking about how much we're bonding, and in the past, we've actually included that, like, we bonded seventeen million, and we bumped it up to twenty-seven because we were including chapter ninety. But then, you did it so expediently, then we didn't end up, you know, we ended up having eleven million dollars that we have to do to finish off the project. So, this is something that's gonna benefit everybody, so it's a hundred million dollars, so it's, so it's, it's a concern. And now, I just have a question for Mr. Mason.
But, and if you, I think there's a, there's a sheet in our, in our presentation that we had prepared for you tonight.
Yeah.
That gives a, uh, of, of the actual, I, I believe, the debt schedule on this.
I didn't see that.
Do you have that?
I don't have it.
No, it's part, it's part of the presentation, um, we were, we were gonna give to you people tonight.
Did give it to me, okay. I was gonna say, I don't see it. Thank you, Al, 'cause that's what I was getting with you next. We're escaping the presentation.
And, and Eric, I'm sure can speak to this?
Okay.
Are we waiting on Eric?
Yep.
It appears Mr. Mason is not at his computer at the moment.
Well, Al, you can tell us more about your presentation than while we wait for Mr. Mason.
I apologize, Counsel McCarthy. I, I don't have any control over this one.
No, this is a good one. Like you said, this takes care of a lot of things, and they, they've done a ton of work on
Yep.
looking at every street and coming up with an index of the good, the bad, you know, out there, and what's underneath. So we do it all at once, so, um, really, uh, really, uh, as Mr. DeBono said, a, a great job.
Counsel Mahoney, would it be all right if I just had a quick request while we're waiting for him?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Mr. Chairman, is that all right if I just ask a quick question?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Al, I just wanna thank you and Paul for taking the time the other day to sit down and go through this with me. It was really helpful to get, like, the breakdown of how much was spent. Um, and I remember asking you, trying to give me the math of, like, what the cost was to do a street um, and a sidewalk, and the water mains. And I think we averaged out, when we were doing the math, to like, I think, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the full street, and that's like a really, 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 you know, uh, sort of, not super inaccurate, but kind of like, you know, it's an average estimate, right? Because of all the different, you know, lengths of the road, and uh, the work that has to go into each of the roads, depending on if it's the water maze, or just the sidewalks, or just the paving, or, you know, having to do patchwork, so. All that being said, again, it was really, really informative to know exactly where the money is going, um, and the, the significant cost to do this kind of work. Is there anywhere that, you know, we can just post something like that to the city's website so residents can see it as well? I've been seeing a lot of posts and comments and requests and emails and phone calls and texts about people asking what's going on with their street, you know, and, um, looking at the cost of this as well. And I think it'd be, it was certainly helpful for me, you know, here to, to know the cost of what it takes to actually do this kind of work. So is there anywhere we can just post that somewhere on the city's website so that people can look up where their street is in this process, what the different indexes mean as far as, like, what their street is rated at, you know, the cost to the sidewalks and all, you know, it was, again, really, really good information. So that's just my request, if we could do that, um, and make that available in public, that'd be great.
Could do that, counselor, yes.
Excellent, thank you. It's a lot of information you, you all put together, so it'd be great if they could, um, take advantage of seeing that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
While we're waiting for, um, Eric, I, I just wanna point out in your package, Counsel Mahoney, um, it's twenty-six miles of neighborhood roads. It's thirteen miles of main roads. Um, it's almost actually forty miles. Uh, in the last four years, three and a half years, we did about six miles a year, which was about, uh, just shy of, uh, about, about twenty miles.
So, one other quick question for that. I know that we just finished a bunch of roads, and I, I have the, um, the payment management plan for phase one and phase two. So, is there, uh, you also have the streets that you've completed as well? Um, in the map? In your key?
Yeah, yes. That, that list we gave you has the streets that were completed.
Okay.
The streets that are on the new plan. Also, anything highlighted in blue will give you the streets that need water mains.
Okay.
I can, if we look, if we look at these, um, I think, Joe, you might be on the PowerPoint. Why don't we show the roads we did, uh, I, I hear it's up here now. These are the roads that we completed in phase one.
Okay.
Um, throughout the city. And then, there's another slide that shows us, okay, here it is, proposed phase two roadways. And then there's a, a slide, I believe, that will show us at the end of, that will be the completion of phase one and two, all the roadways we have done, we will have done in, you know, roughly under ten years.
Yeah, I know, Al. And then, there still seems to be a lot of streets that we still have to get to, is what I, what I can still see.
Well, you know, there's no doubt, we have a thousand thirty-five roadways in the city totaling two hundred fifty-seven miles, so.
I understand.
It's a, it's a, it's a, there's a lot out there, counselor, as you know.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it just has to be a schedule that you keep going. It doesn't, it doesn't get, it never really ends. By the time you actually get to the last street in Quincy, we'll be going back to the first ones that you did, so.
No, but, one of the important points I wanna make here, when we do this asset management-based approach, taking care of our infrastructure, and we, and we look at, you know, ten or twenty years down the road, it, it seems like a long time. It's not a long time. So, twenty years when we come back, some of these roads may be cracking and so forth. Because we've done the infrastructure, it won't require us to do full-depth reclamation. A lot of the cost in these roads is we have to do a full-depth reclamation because we're digging up the road, putting sewer, water and gas in. When we take, when we take care of that infrastructure now, and I wish someone had done it twenty or thirty or forty years ago, 'cause that infrastructure will last a hundred years. But twenty years down the road, when we start to go back and look at these roads, it's gonna cost a lot less to fix these roads. We'll be just doing grind and overlays and microsailing, which is a lot less money, so. It, it is costing a lot of money today, but, you know, in the future, when we, you know, I'll be gone, um,
It's just gonna take, Council of Debona says you're gonna be here, though.
Yeah, twenty years, uh, you know, there could be some, you know, young, uh, Mayor Andronico, I don't know, but, but, um, those, you know, the people there at that time will not have to expend the cost that, it, it, the cost that we're incurring today. 'Cause we want, this is why we wanna take care of these things now.
Al, you just lost eight votes with that Andronico comment.
Well, okay, or, or we could say, uh, uh, Counsel Palmucci, uh, DeBono, I'll keep it to the Italians. How's that?
You know, when you're in a hole, Mr. Graciello, you stop. All right. So, I think, is Eric Mason back?
Yeah, Eric's on. Eric, uh, we got a debt service question by Counsel Mahoney.
I just wanted, um, to understand, you know, the debt service impacts of the hundred million dollar request. It looks like you have the, the slide up. And then I also had a question if the, if, um, you know, when we're bonding this, do we get five, five to seven-year bands? 'Cause this is a project that's gonna take five to seven years. So will we be doing it for the whole hundred million, or will we be doing in trun, in tranches?
Um, so first issue is five to seven-year bands. Just to clarify, bands are bond initiation notes. Notes are only one year, so you can't have five or seven-year bands.
I didn't think you could. This is a five to seven-year project. That's why I was asking this question, so.
Okay, yeah, I was just saying, regardless of type of project, bands are one year. Um, so, no, this, the only time you're allowed extended periods of band renewal is in projects that fall usually under chapter forty-two, or diff, as we like to call it. Um, so no, you'll have two years of, uh, band renewal. So, one year band renewal, one year band renewal, and then bond conversion.
Okay. So, with this hundred million dollar request, what does it do for our budget with regards to our policy, um, for the, for the staying within the six and a half to seven percent?
Uh, that's what this chart is, counselor. Um, that, the blue line would be the effects on this.
And this is just on the hundred million dollar request, and, and are we doing this with every bond that's coming before us now to be able to track this?
Yes. Yeah, so this is done, this is, every proposal that exists is modeled out with this. Um, including even the Quincy College building that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, but we didn't see that for the Quincy College, correct?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, so it looks like, so in, in, in this particular case, it's, it looks like in twenty twenty-six is the closest, and then we get kind of tight back and, um, not tight, over at the highest in twenty twenty-six, we're the closest with that, correct?
Correct.
Am I looking at that correctly? And what's, and, and what, what do you think that percentage is in twenty twenty-six when we're looking at that? Um, when you, when you're speaking, and how much, well, how much debt ratio do we have left if we're gonna keep bonding the way we're bonding? Just out of curiosity.
So in twenty twenty-six, we have a debt ratio at seven point oh five percent.
Mm-hmm. Which leaves us, you know, roughly, what's, you know, how much wiggle do we have to be able to stay in the seven and a half?
Subtract from seven and a half is point four five percent.
Point four, in millions, millions of bonding, what, what would we be looking at?
Uh, that would be able to support, um, a hundred and nine million dollars in twenty-year notes. So your, your project capacity would be a hundred and nine million.
So if in twenty twenty-six, we have an emergency project that we come in and we need a hundred and twenty-six million dollars with the bonding, we would be over that ratio at that point because of-
No, we would not be, because then, if we borrow money in twenty twenty-six, it does not become debt payments until twenty twenty-seven. So we'd be able to handle that, counselor.
Okay. So, but if we come in, in the next six months with a hundred and twenty-six, and we start the project, so this is really depending on when you start taking the money and start borrowing money, correct?
Correct. Yes, yeah, that is printed on when it's borrowed, not when it's authorized.
So sometimes when we take out projects, we have these timelines that we say it's gonna be done, like, even with Quincy College, where we say it's gonna be done in twenty twenty-six potentially. But if it takes an extra year, it gets pushed out a year, do we ever go back and look at these debt ratio projects again? Because we haven't actually started spending money?
Yes. This is updated frequently, sometimes in excess of four times a year.
Okay. So, but we don't get to see that, though. So when you're updating it, we're not seeing it. We're just, we're just assuming it's being updated, like the, like the-
Always available for any questions when it, uh, comes to this.
'Cause I think- When we did the educational building, it was a little tight in, in that timeline there too, so it's always been updated since then. So the tight, okay. Thank you very much.
All set. Counsel Mahoney?
Yeah, I'm all set for it right now. Thank you very much, Counsel McCarthy.
Uh, anyone else have any comments on the motion? Okay, that being said, uh, Jen, why don't we do a roll call vote on, this will be twenty twenty-one, zero, three, one, hundred million dollars for twenty twenty-one roadway improvements?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Feyman.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
I'm a positive recommendation.
Thank you. The next item I have, uh, which kind of goes hand in hand with this, is twenty twenty-one, zero, three, two appropriation of forty million for twenty twenty-one drinking water systems improvements. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the motion? Seeing none. Jen, can you call a roll?
Actually, I had one.
Seeing Mrs. Mahoney?
Just see, I was waiting. If I could, if we could just get an update on what this is, 'cause this is the, this is the, is this the drinking water one?
Who, you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, just go ahead.
Yeah, this is, uh, you know, part of our rolling infrastructure plan. This is our water main and water distribution system improvements. Um, a five-year, forty-million-dollar water system rehabilitation bond. We're, we're selecting, um, five years because it aligns with the current phase of the MWRA, Local Water System Assistance Program, which has five years remaining in its current authorization. Um, we've recently completed and updated our citywide hydraulic modeling and long-term water system master plan and recommendations from our engineering consultant, consultant Tetra Tech, uh, which result in about eight to nine million of water system work annually. Um, with eight million, eight million being local water system improvement bond, and another one million from the MWRA. Um, you know, we recommend these replacements based on the age of the pipe, fire flow issues we're having, pressure issues, tuberculation of the pipe, discontinuity of the pipe. That's different pipe sizes that flow from one pipe to another. Um, close to thirty percent of our pipes are over a hundred years old. So, uh, you know, this is a, a huge necessity to the city, uh, to get this infrastructure fixed. Um, I wanna note that this debt supplied against the Water Enterprise Fund and not the General Fund. Um, and I'm sure Eric can answer any of those questions. Um, we also have Tetra Tech here tonight. If anyone wants, wants to ask them any questions regarding, uh, uh, their modeling for the city.
Can I just, but when you say, it says in the, in the title of the bond, it says it's for drinking water systems, but is it, is that what this is for? It's for drinking water systems, or is it for all water?
Well, yeah, drinking water systems are our, those are our water mains. That's the water that flows into your home.
That's what people get charged their water bill for, correct? Or no?
Correct.
Okay, so, and this might tie into different things, but we also have, like, in the, this is changing into the sewer pipes, but sometimes we have the water mains leak into the sewer pipes, which, or vice versa, and cause more water problems. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, water, when water leaks into the sewer pipes, the, we're paying that wa, that, that sewer water is going into the MWRA, and we're being charged for that.
Okay.
So.
And by, by doing these projects, does it help, help fix the, that issue?
Yeah, well, yes. When we, when we talk about, well, we wanna keep the water, uh, water mains from leaking, but we also wanna fix our sewer, um, pipes, for the same reason.
Yeah, for the both, for both the same reasons, but I'm trying to understand. So, and let me, just out of curiosity, and I'm not sure if it has anything to do with it, but, and I, and I'm just trying to tie something together. So, we also got, um, we were brought in, um, by the, the EPA, Department of Justice was looking at, um, Quincy for, um, for a lawsuit. Is, does it, does any of this have anything to do with that?
All of this, um, all of this work we're doing, uh, helps those situations we have in, 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 um, City Engineer Paul Costello can talk about that, but this is all part of our MS four requirements, the EPA and the DEP.
Yeah. I'm, I was specifically talking about March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, when the United States alleges multiple environmental violation issues by the city of Quincy, and I understand what you're saying, Al, but I'm just, because I wanna see us be proactive about some of these things, but I just wanted, I was just curious to know if that, if this is any of the work that's gonna be able to help in that situation, because we haven't-
Absolutely. It all helps. The sewer work and the drainage work absolutely helps in this situation.
And we haven't had any resolution to that, right?
Uh, it's, they're in discussions, I, and, and that would be, uh, you know, you'd have to talk to, um, City Solicitor Jim Timmons in that regard.
Okay, so, so when we're making, so when we're making these decisions to move forward with forty million dollars for, um, for this improvement, we're not trying to make sure that we're ticking a box to make sure that's working towards that?
Well, it's, that, it's all ticking towards that. I mean, where, we, um, you know, our goal is to, uh, eliminate, um, situations where, you know, in our drainage systems, our sewer systems, where we could be polluting with this, uh, you know, illicit discharge, with all, all of those issues. Um, we are, we wanna correct if there are any issues.
Again, I, again, it's just, so then, when you said that this is the Water Enterprise account, but the forty-million-dollar bond is gonna be through our general bond obligation, right?
I'm sorry, the-
So when you said this is through the Water Enterprise, but we're, it's, it's, it's being bonded, it's being, could you just explain that to me, what you meant by that?
Yes, it's not, this is bonded against paid out of the Water Enterprise account, uh, in, uh, a long-term debt in those line items. The sewer is against the Sewer Enterprise account. The sewer is against the sewer enterprise account, uh, the long-term deadline.
All right.
I'll, I'll just add, uh, just for clarification, that this appropriation is for the drinking water system, the water mains. When you turn on your faucet, um, if there's a, this, the water pipe system is under pressure. So there's no possible way for a leaking sewer pipe. Just wanted to clarify, uh, for sewer to get into the drinking water system. Subsequent appropriation bills before you have to do with the drainage system and the sewer system repairs that Wood and Curran has been working on. But this appropriation in front of you is for the water mains that, um, were highlighted on the list of roadways, uh, you just voted on.
Yep, I just, I just wanted clarification specifically for that, so I appreciate that. Um, I don't have any other questions. So long as this is, this is being bonded against the, um, the enterprise account. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Any other comments on the motion? Ms. Manning, can you call a roll?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine to zero, positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Our next item, 2021-033 appropriation, 4.6 million for 2021 sewer system improvements.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Anyone on the motion, comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
My members positive recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, next item, 2021-034 appropriation, 6.5 million for acceptance of 2022 sewer rehab SRF loan. Motion to approve? Do I have a motion? Have a motion on the motion?
You have a motion?
I think I got it from Mr. Harris, did I?
Yeah, can I just ask a quick question?
On the motion, Council Mahoney.
Um, if you could, Al, could you just, this is, is this, this is being funded through, is this from the 118 million dollars from the, the governor? I'm just trying to understand this one, too. If we could just explain this to the general public about this, too.
No, this is actually, um, the sewer improvements are funded through the, um, State Revolving Fund, SRF loan. Uh, and, um,
So what am I, is that right? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, um, it's a 2% loan for 20 years. And it's, uh, also eligible for a minimum of 6.6% principal forgiveness through these, um, so this is, um, housekeeping. This is, um, to, to be eligible for these loans, we need approval before June 30th.
Yeah.
This is actually for the 2022 construction season, starting next March.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the motion?
President McCarthy.
Council Andronico, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with this through the state. My understanding is those loan percentages, uh, the rate goes down to 1.5% for Quincy because we are a housing choice community as well, instead of the 2%.
Even better. Thank you, Counselor.
You're Counselor.
Um, please call a roll, Ms. Manning?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chair, Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
My members positive recommendation.
Thank you. And, um, last item tonight, 2021-035 appropriation, $3,180,000 for fiscal year 2022 water quality and stormwater planning.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Harris, on the motion? Please call a roll.
Council Andronico. Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Eight members positive recommendation.
Thank you. Um, that ends a very busy night, but I knew. Let me go back to Commissioner Grazioso for a second.
Who are you, Mr. Chairman? I just want to, uh, thank the Council for your engagement and partnership on this plan and overall constituent outreach, uh, your support at the annual springtime award meetings, neighborhood meetings, the numerous constituent issues. It's been a valuable asset, uh, to our efficiency and our ability to accomplish so much so quickly. Uh, so I just want to say thank you for that.